All right, welcome, everyone. We're called to order at 9:00 on the dot. We're going to skip Item B in the sake of time. Commissioner Smith, would you lead us in Item C, the pledge?
I quite believe this is the title of the United States of America and the Republic which stands, Federation Under God, Indivisible, et Infiniment. What do we intend to say for it?
All right, thank you, sir. We've got just one set of minutes to approve on Item D as in Delta, the June 30th special meeting minutes. May I have a motion? All right, a motion from Commissioner Riznardi. I'll go ahead and second it. Seeing no lights, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the June 30th minutes have been approved unanimously. All right, we'll go right on into Item E as an echo. We'll start out with E1. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the person that was going to receive this is not here right now, so can we post on this?
We'll circle back.
Thanks.
And same thing with E3, I'm sorry, not E3, E2. We'll do the same. I think they're coming around 11:00 from Miami or thereabout. So let's go on to E3. Commissioner Riznardi?
I'm not sure if my people are here. Kathy and Jennifer? Oh, great. Thank you, guys. All right, I'll read them, then I'll let you guys speak. Whereas arts education comprising a rich array of disciplines, including dance, media, arts, music, theater, visual arts, and more, is a well-rounded subject and an essential element of a complete education for all students; and whereas arts education enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, discipline and collaboration, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding, which supports academic success across the curriculum; and whereas arts education contributes to personal growth outside of the classroom, including increasing a student's likelihood to participate in civic life, volunteerism, altruism, and community engagement; and whereas arts education contributes to a welcoming school environment where students can express themselves in a safe and positive way; and whereas to succeed in today's economy, students must masterfully develop traits that business leaders demand in a 21st-century workforce, such as communicating through words, images, sounds, movement; and whereas the arts are an integral part of complete education, which contributes to the vibrancy and vitality of communities and the nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, supports the designation of September 13th through 19th, 2020, as Arts and Education Week, and cause on all residents to observe this week with appropriate activities. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Y'all have the floor.
Thank you so much. My name is Kathy Agarun. I'm interim director of Brevard Cultural Alliance, and our communications manager, Jennifer Perini, has joined me this morning. Brevard Cultural Alliance is the designated local arts agency for the entire county, as designated by the Board of County Commissioners, and we thank you for that. We serve cultural organizations. We serve individual artists. And most importantly today, we strive to serve the students of Brevard County through providing arts education experiences. And we're proud, we're proud to serve Brevard County. We're proud to serve the county commission, and we thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was incorrect. I do have someone here today when we get done for recipient.
All right, we'll move, we'll move right back to that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and circle back to E as an echo, 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a resolution honoring the late John Anderson, former head of the Brevard County Republican Party. With your permission.
Please.
Thanks. Whereas the Honorable John Anderson passed away on August 23rd, 2020, at the age of 93; and whereas he is survived by his wife, Babette, five children, and seven grandchildren; and whereas he was a retired certified registered nurse and anesthetist who received his nursing degree from Manhattan State Hospital School of Nursing, and his nurse and anesthetist degree from Harlem Hospital School of Nurse Anesthesia; and whereas after having lived in Brevard County for years, John Anderson was elected in 2008 as the first black person to head the Brevard County Republican Party and led the party with dignity and honor; and whereas he was also elected as Republican Executive Committee District 2 Chairman from 1992 to 1996; and whereas John Anderson has been described as a courageous man who has, quote, "spoke truth to power," end quote, and as a unique individual who has, who is loved by many, and well, as being compassionate, kind, and positive; and whereas his service to the community was endless, including serving as an advocate for the Brevard School Foundation, serving on the AARP Florida Legislative Council, and the Space Coast Tiger Bay Club, volunteering for and supporting Central Brevard Sharing Center, and being a lifelong member of the NAACP where he joined the fight against the scourge of racism. Now therefore be it resolved that John Anderson will always be fondly remembered and celebrated in Brevard County, done ordered and adopted in regular session the 15th day of September 2020. Motion to...
I am proud to accept this award. This is Lorelei Anderson Francis, his daughter. And I know that John would have been happy to get this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Tabia, a second from Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. I, when I was elected in 2008 to the State House, he was simultaneously elected, and I can't remember having a better bridge between the local party and the elected officials. He set the bar high that I wish was currently, unfortunately, not in place right now. So he's, he leaves a very strong legacy, and thank you very much for being here.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Ephesians and Foxtrot, the consent. I've got several that I believe are being polled. F-18 I have down that Commissioner Tabia would like to poll. Oop, ladies, if you'd hang on a second, I believe Commissioner Tabia wants to get a photo with y'all as well. No? No photo? Mr. Bate, do we have the resolution for BCA as well?
Yes.
Thanks. Yeah, if you all want to do a photo, I'm happy to do that, whatever you all want.
We're good. Thank you.
They want to do one? Okay. All right, well, we'll go ahead and do a photo for Item E3 real quick. Mr. Pritchett? You think we should all, would you all like to get in, or would you just like Commissioner Riznardi? Doesn't matter to us, you're not going to hear anyone's feelings?
Oh, just the commissioner's side.
All right, perfect.
Okay. She's smiling.
All right, thank you all. All right, so we'll, we'll go ahead, as I said, to Item Ephesians and Foxtrot. Commissioner Tabia, I understand, would like to poll F-18. I'm going to go ahead and poll F-22 and F-25, and then we have a card on F-32. So may I have a motion to approve Consent Less 18, 22, 25, and 32? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of passing Consent Less 18, 22, 25, and 32? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Consent Less 18, 22, 25, and 32, passed unanimously. Commissioner Tabia, let's go ahead and address F-18, if we may, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the county manager's office for their work on, on my request. This item is to grant a nominal lease of 2,300 square feet of county property. This, however, comes with a real cost. For example, the county manager's office put together a quick analysis regarding the potential savings of utilizing this space for the TDO office. Currently, the TDO office pays about $100,000 a year for space in the Cocoa Village on a lease that extends until July 2022. While there is an early termination fee, it will rapidly decrease in February to about $16,000. In other words, even accounting for the termination fee, county taxpayers may be able to save roughly $92,000, according to the county manager's office, should this lease be transferred over to the TDO. Now, I'm going to ask for a motion to table this item until October 6, and ask staff to go through a further analysis on the feasibility of this. Roughly, as you can see, it's about the same square footage. Of course, according to the analysis, this may be more than what is needed. But there are some questions that probably need answering, such as would the $62,000 renovation or relocation cost be borne at some point regardless of the date of the relocation? Do we have to charge the TDO rent? Or is the $113,000 in the analysis, which would be an additional resource to the county, could that be used for advertising? Is it possible to grant the TDO a nominal lease at this site, it being in the public interest? And finally, is it possible to configure part of the space for BCA, BCA usage for, for their administrative functions but not the storage functions while utilizing the remainder of the space for county functions? So there's many questions that need to be answered. Should we go in this direction? But according to, again, these are the county manager offices' numbers, not mine, at a minimum, it shows a savings of $92,000 bucks, and I think it's worthy of postponing this till our next meeting to get a real cost.
Peter, could I have you come up for a sec, sir? I've got a few questions. Obviously, the, the office location that we're talking about is the Merritt Island Service Complex that my office is in. I can tell you, since the Department of Health left, it's been somewhat lonely, which is good and bad. Parking is no longer an issue, not that it was bad before. It is nice having neighbors there regardless of whether it's TDO or whether it's BCA. I've got some questions. I'm looking at a handout, and I apologize if you don't have the benefit of having seen this beforehand. This just came from Commissioner Tabia, as the item was called up, detailing the roughly $92,000 of savings that Commissioner Tabia indicated we could, we could have with TDO moving. What I'm not seeing, at least at initial blush, looking at this, is the $45,000 to $50,000 in general fund savings that we have associated with BCA's current contract. Can you address, and I apologize for not being able to give you a heads-up on this, can you address the value with respect to that?
Sure. And actually, this was something that the county attorney's office identified in the lease when they were looking at the BCA lease. There were some services that BCA was providing that was previously paid for out of the general fund, I believe it was to the tune of about $50,000, and that was to manage art in public places. So that program has gotten a lot of traction. It's, it's been very popular. It's something that the county wanted to continue to do. So the proposal in the lease is that they continue to manage that in, basically in exchange for the space that they have. I believe the space that they have is valued at about $6 a square foot, little over 3,000 square feet. So it's somewhere in the $18,000 to $20,000 range in terms of the lease value, but the Art in Public Places was previously $50,000. So that's kind of a trade-off.
And let me ask as well, because I, you know, that's obviously one aspect of it. The other aspect is, in order to realize any savings, or even to have the potential of any sort of savings, it would obviously have to entail TDO moving.
Right.
And I'm aware, at least from my having been in that service complex for the past couple of years at this point now, we've always had vacancies. Now, we have had far more vacancies since the Health Department left, but I've been unaware that TDO was ever looking to move to the Merritt Island Service Complex. Is that something that was discussed in, in management meetings? I'm just not aware of that.
No, sir. Our, our current lease goes through 2022, I believe, July of 2022. There's a stepped penalty for, for getting out of that lease ahead of the end of that. I believe after August of '21, it starts getting a little bit more attractive to be able to get out if there's a, a place where there's a better, you know, price point. You know, I would love the opportunity to, to, you know, spend some time, to Commissioner Tabia's point, to take a look at, you know, are, are there other government facilities? Because right now, the space would not be contiguous. We would be on two different floors. I would love to have my department in one, you know, one space together. There's 15 of us, so, you know, it's not a huge department, but, you know, being able to work together would be great. There may be other opportunities, too, in terms of, I think now, in a time of COVID, there's going to be some business leasing space out there that might be very, very attractive in terms of pricing and could maybe allow us to partner up with other businesses. So I'd love the time to, to be able to take a look at that.
And let me, let me ask you, Peter, again. You said it was 2022 that your current lease runs?
Correct. July of '22, yes.
Okay, because I'm trying to figure out some way of keeping our options open, but also not forcing you, instead of being in one location, to split floors, as you would have to do, which is obviously less than ideal.
Right.
At my location, a location that I understand has never been sought by TDO or by staff to move you all to. But would you have any, any issues from your department's perspective? Were we to extend the lease with BCA up to July 2022 now, and then between now and then, we can come back and reevaluate whether there's any, any interest in moving TDO?
I think they'd do two things. One, it would give us time to analyze the market and really do a full real estate search. The other thing is, it would save us about $70,000 in moving and build-out costs and penalties right now, which we don't have budgeted for the 2021 budget. So it would allow us to put it into the 2022 budget if that were the, the direction that we were headed.
So $70,000 in moving and build-out costs, plus the $50,000 that we were previously paying to have managed art in public places? My, my math may not be the best, but I think that's around 120 versus 92 in potential savings. Let me ask as well, Ms. Bentley, and I'm sorry for kind of jumping around here, but are we contractually obligated for some period of time with BCA to allow them to stay there? And if so, when, when does that current lease end?
Hold on.
I think it's October 1. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it ends now.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
It's their standard three-year renewal. So it ends October, September 30, and this would put them through 2023.
Okay. Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, your math is a little off for a number of reasons. $62,000 is already included in the $92,000 savings, so you counted it twice. On top of that, I don't, I, I would have an issue with the $62,000 even being counted once, but these are the county manager's offices' numbers, and I didn't want to argue with that. Because if, if the TDO was to move, there would be a realization of that $62,000 or thereabouts when they ended up in a different office, nonetheless. They've got far more square footage than policy dictates, according to the analysis that, that, that our office, based on the county numbers, have, have done. And while I appreciate, you know, the TDO all being on one floor, but the reality of the situation is, we could face some tough budgetary times, and if that requires Mr. Cranis and his staff to go up some stairs, I imagine there's an elevator, too, for those that have mobility issues, I believe that county taxpayer savings of, in the amount of at least $92,000 is worth the time and effort for those folks to go up. As far as the storing art in public places, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And I think the low-hanging fruit may be that art in public places is something that maybe the TDO doesn't necessarily need to continue. But if they did, I would have no problem with decreasing the lease amount of $6 a square foot that we would be charging, according to this analysis, down to an amount that would allow that to fully pay for, that $50,000. There would be that. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, and I, I want as much buy-in as possible, I would have no problem offering that nominal lease to the TD, to the TDO, so they could use that $113,000 for advertising. I think that that probably is the most beneficial way to, to expend those resources. The 113 would just come back to the county. So when you see that $92,000 savings there, if you want to, and I understand, I just am handing this out, that's why.
Yes, sir.
I, I am using the Commissioner Pritchett idea of taking a little bit of time here and asking for it to be tabled. But my analysis on this, using these numbers, would not only be a $92,000 savings to the TDO, if you use these numbers, it would be $113,000 savings to the county, because that would be an intergovernmental transfer to our general fund. So I'm looking at more than $200,000. If you put a, and, and, and there, question number four, was about whether or not the BCA could fit in that footprint of that 6,302 square feet, which is larger than the space they currently have. These are all questions, I think, that could be answered. I don't want to rush into anything, because I thank the county manager's office for doing this so quickly and objectively. I just think that there's more analysis on this and, and potential savings that, that we can have. I certainly would like to get Commissioner Pritchett to use her accounting to weigh in on this.
Well, let me, let me ask you, Commissioner Tabia, because I, I'm listening to what you're saying, and I still am having trouble with, with numbers reconciling and reflecting both the $50,000 that we were previously having to pay to run that Arts in Public Places program, plus the move-out and build-out costs. I'm not saying that you haven't reflected both of those. I just, I can't tell at first blush from the spreadsheet that I've gotten. That said, as I understand, the, the lease termination, the early termination, is going to drop down a tier. Was it February, Peter?
In, actually, in July of next year, it would drop down to just one month penalty.
Okay, July of next year.
So August 1, you know, move out.
All right, let me, let me ask. Commissioner Tabia, and I'd like to work with you here to better understand the numbers, but I agree, there's, there's really a need to look at this over a little bit longer than a five-minute discussion can provide now. I wouldn't mind either making the motion or accepting a motion, if you choose to modify yours, at least now to buy us some more time to extend their lease through July of 2021, to at least get that amount of time, because there's nothing that's going to happen between now and then, anyway. If you want to modify your motion, I, I can tell you, you'll have one more vote, and I would think that you have a good chance of getting it to pass.
Mr., Mr. Chair? And my suggestion would, my suggestion would be this, if, I don't think there's, it's, the lease doesn't run up in the next two weeks, is my understanding. So we may find out that this is not feasible. I'm going to let the county manager's office run with this, because I think they offer the most objective approach. If this becomes, if this becomes not feasible, then we may want to extend that, instead of one year, to three years. But that's something that we could do at the, at the next meeting. And if we can't put the TDO in there and there's no one else, then I would have no problem, instead of doing a one-year lease, doing a three-year lease for the, for the BCA.
Any concerns, Ms. Bentley or Mr. Bate?
I believe the, the current lease with BCA expires at the end of September, and a new one would begin October 1.
Oh, that's a problem.
Yes, and our next meeting is, yes, okay. I, I misspoke. I apologize.
Can we extend them at least till, let's say, July of 2021, then? That'll at least give us plenty of time to go over this, or three months?
I'm, I'm okay with three months.
Okay, so if you, if you'd like to modify or withdraw your motion and make another one to, to extend under the same term for three months.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Sure. I'll table the first motion and extend the, ask for a motion to extend the BCA at least three, three months, and ask staff to do a thorough analysis on the feasibility of using this space for the TDO office, including answering those questions and any others they, they may have, and provide us that in a time prior to the ending of that three-month extension.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and second it, and I'll also ask, if you have it available sooner, please bring it to us sooner. I don't want to put BCA in, in a bad spot by making them wait any longer than need be, or, or TDO, for that matter. I'll go ahead and second it. Any further discussion? Commissioner Riznardi?
Yeah, I mean, related but separate issue. I would like an inventory, because I know there's some properties that we're renting or leasing to nonprofits that are paying like a dollar a year and that kind of, I'd like an inventory on that as well. Again, like, as a separate issue, I, I think we probably need to take a look at some of that property.
Yeah, I don't know that you need a motion. I'm happy to, I mean, if we want to go that way, I can...
I mean, I don't know that we need a motion for that, right?
Commissioner Pritchett?
Mr. Cranis, if you would reach out to our offices, too. I think figuring out how to best put you in a good place to do tourism is important, too. So that would be important.
Okay.
All right, so I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Tabia's motion, as was rephrased. The earlier motion's withdrawn. Seeing no further discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question on extending BCA's lease under the same terms for three months, and then hopefully we'll, we'll be able to revisit the issue well prior to that time passing. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and address, hopefully briefly, F-22. Stephen, thanks for coming up, sir. My, my one item and my, my one request with respect to this item, I should say, is that we at least consider putting this out for bid. I don't have a problem by any means with, with going the way that, that staff has suggested, I just am concerned, given the amount that we're talking about, that we're not opening it up to a larger field of, of potential bidders or, or to open it up for proposals. So I, I don't know where other folks are on that, but I would just be interested in putting it out to see if there are other entities that could do this cheaper for us. It's not a hot topic. Okay, would someone make a motion, or I can go ahead and pass the figurative gavel? All right, perfect, okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett to send this out to bid, I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion? Please, sir.
Sorry. Mr. Darling, does this cause any issues whatsoever?
No, it doesn't, sir, we already have one contract that we're currently utilizing.
Okay, and, and why, I mean, is this, why, why, why don't these type of things get put out to bid, out of curiosity?
So this was competitively procured, not by my office, we're piggybacking it, it was a co-op that was competitively procured in Texas, and that's one of the options that we have in purchasing, is to piggyback off of other contracts that fall in line with, with our policies, and we utilize that to save time and, and effort on the staff.
Thank you.
All right, any, any further discussion? We have Commissioner Pritchett's motion, my second. Go ahead, we'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, please say aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. All right, and my last item that I pulled here is 25. I don't normally interfere or really interject even in surplus land sales, but I'll, I'll tell you, this one is in a particularly interesting location, it's right next to BCSO's Criminal Investigation Office, which is, obviously, it's county property. Depending on what we want to use that property for in the future, if BCSO moves out, or if they want to expand, and I, I don't believe they have any plans of doing that in the near term, it's really good land. I also think the appraisal at 180, even if it's a valid appraisal, which it may well be, it just strikes me as awfully low, and the value to us may be substantially higher, given that we own the adjacent property. So for the, the first time since I've been up here in the past couple of years, I, I would ask that we, we not approve this one, and that we just retain the land at this point. If at some point in the future, the value increases such that it, it may be worth selling, I would probably be in a different boat than I am now, I just, I'm concerned about selling this property at anything approaching the price that's, that's, it's been appraised at. So with that, I would ask, or I could certainly pass the gavel and make a, a motion to reject this particular item, or disapprove it, if you, if you will. I'll go ahead and pass the gavel. Commissioner Pritchett, you're now chairing it. I'll make a motion to reject this particular item, F-25. Now it is.
Well, I just have a question. I would like to ask staff what the reasoning, I would like to ask staff what the reasoning was behind the idea of selling.
Commissioner, we received a phone call and then a follow-up from the sheriff's office, who indicated that they would not be using that property or needing it in the future, and they confirmed that in writing in an email. Once they submitted that to us and said that they did not have a, a need for that property, we then, staff, central services, sent it out to all the departments to determine if anyone else in the organization felt a, a need to use that property. The answer came back, no. Once that answer came back, no, we sent it over to Public Works Land Acquisition to get an appraisal done, so that we could then bring this forward to the board to see if the board wanted us to move forward and sell the surplus property. The board has indicated to us, and many times in the past, to, to sell any surplus property that we did not anticipate any need for, and that was the reason that was done.
Thank you. And I can tell you, I still feel the same way. We have an awful lot of property that, if we're not using it, it could be used, I think, to our betterment if we sold it, because as we all know, we're in a budget crunch going forward. So that $180,000 would be a big help, one, and two, if we sold it, now we're getting taxes from whoever buys it, which also increases our income. So I would be in favor of selling this.
And I, I'll just tell you, Commissioner Smith, this is essentially an anomaly for me. Like I said, in the couple of years that I've been up here, I've, I've never opposed selling any surplus property. In fact, I think it was maybe a week, a week and a half ago, I reached out to staff to determine if we could sell certain land that it appeared we hadn't used in some time. So normally, I'm on the other side of things, but this particular property, I think the value is not reflected in the 180. And again, if we have a different sheriff, whether Sheriff Ivy retires in four years or chooses to do something else, I don't know that they're going to want to keep centralized in Titusville. They may want to move to the center of the county, this is actually pretty close to where D4 meets D2. I've got problems both with getting rid of that land because of its, its value associated with the adjacent property, and then also because the 180 just strikes me as, as abnormally low, based on the volume of traffic on that road. So I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, my position with, with this particular parcel is to keep it. If you have one in your district in the future that, that's an anomaly as well, you know, certainly, unless it's a multi-million dollar piece of property, I'd be inclined to, to go your way on it, but this is one, I just, I think, knowing the district, we really shouldn't get rid of. There may be an opportunity cost that just isn't known to us at this point.
Well, if you think 180 is low, we could certainly get another appraisal and, and confirm or reject the idea that you're proposing. And, and as far as the BCO ever moving, we've got an awful lot of vacant land right here that several buildings could be built, and, you know, multi-story buildings that could house a BCO. So I don't, I don't see any reason not to sell it.
Let me jump in real quick.
Please.
There's nothing on this property right now, so we're not having to maintain any assets on it. So, you know, I, I know that it wouldn't necessarily be for selling, and I think maybe it might not hurt to wait just a little while, because the money right now would just go into the reserve fund at this point. So Commissioner Smith, I do agree with you, that I would love to get property out there to start raising tax base, but Commissioner Loeb, you did make a point, this is like, could be quite a central piece of property later if, if we had to expand. So I'm a little split on it, but I don't know, maybe waiting a little while wouldn't hurt, but I, I really could almost, you know.
Vote either way.
Yeah, so.
If we, I mean, another option, and then I see a light from Commissioner Tobias, another option is, real briefly, is if we list it with a minimum bid that's high enough, I wouldn't mind that, but I think the minimum bid would have to be substantially higher, like 500. And I, I know it sounds like I'm pulling a number out of thin air, but 180 just seems drastically lower than the value.
Well, like I said, we could get another appraisal done, that's, that's one.
But I hate to spend the money getting another appraisal.
Two, it's a sell, well, you know, how much money are you going to spend compared to not selling it? You know, if you sell it, you got 180,000. If you don't sell it, you got zero. And this is a seller's market right now, real estate's booming. So if we get another appraisal and it comes in at 185 or 285, whatever it comes in, it's a good time to sell, just because there's buyers out there. Real estate's really hot.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Why don't we let the market, why don't we let the market dictate this? And, and if you, you see this as $500,000, worth $500,000, I imagine someone else may see it worth $500,000. I don't know about setting a minimum bid, but here's a, with your permission, a question.
Please.
Ms. Bentley, do we need a supermajority vote on this?
Yes.
So, you know, the, that, that's an interesting, that's certainly an interesting wrinkle. I don't know that, I, I agree with what Commissioner Smith said, we're in a property boom, I think the Florists Day even had an article about it last week. I don't know the difference between whatever, 180 and 500, it would more than have, it would, it would have to triple almost. I don't know that we're going to see a tripling anytime soon, so I, I think it may be a long time before we see $500,000 on that one.
I just, I think there's a value to us that isn't necessarily the same to other individuals, based on our owning that adjacent property.
Can you explain the, I don't, I can't see a realization of a value to us as it's vacant land.
No, with BCSO's facility next to it, and I've, I've been in that facility on, on more than one occasion, at least, if they wanted to expand, it would be ideal, they would be able to use the existing facility and literally walk across the street, or if they want to pull permits, perhaps move their parking to a degree that's on the, the side of the property, but closest to D4 on the west. They, they have parking to the west of the building, they could eliminate some of that parking, physically extend the building, and then move parking however they'd like at that point, and they'd be able to stay at the same location.
Okay, wouldn't, wouldn't the sheriff or someone, a representative from his office be making that point right now, if, if they wanted that piece of property?
Our sheriff lives up in Mims. I don't know that our sheriff, in 10 years or in eight years, is going to live in Mims. It makes sense that they're centralized in Titusville. I don't know that that's going to be the case 10 years from now. I think with the sheriff, with, with Sheriff Ivy, who I'm very happy with, he's probably not going to want to expand this, but I don't know that he's going to be sheriff indefinitely. He's probably at some point going to retire, or maybe pursue something at the state level, or win the lottery, I don't know. But I, I just, I think there's a value with our having that adjacent property that's not reflected in this appraisal that we've gotten. But I, I appreciate where you're at, and I get the need to, to try to pull in as much money as we can, but I, I think it's not reflective of the actual value to us of that property.
And, and I'm, I'm, I still, how, I understand how the appraisal came out at $180,000. How, how can we put a, how can we arbitrarily, do we have any analysis that it's worth $500,000?
No, and again, I'm, I'm saying, in terms of, in terms of the number, if, if you want to go the direction Commissioner Smith suggested and get another appraisal, I'm, I'm not going to object to that by any means, but the problem is, the appraisal that we have doesn't put any sort of value on it being adjacent to an existing property that we have a, a BCSO presence, and it doesn't reflect the fact that if they were to expand, that that would be an ideal location to expand into. So I, I understand where you're coming from, and if you're not going to support it, that's, that's totally fine. Commissioners Nardi?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for one, and I'm always a champion of, of let's get rid of what we can, because if it's not being utilized, and again, I think the sheriff made it pretty clear to us that he wasn't going to use that property, and all of county staff made it clear that no one department was going to need that property. So maybe the compromise, and I don't know if Commissioner Loeb would be agreeable to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than get like the second appraisal and wait and everything, get the second appraisal and direct staff to take an average of the two, you know, maybe that's, that's the answer. If, if it moves in the way, depending on what Commissioner Pritchett wants to do as well, if it moves in the way of selling the land, but I can't see holding on to it for a maybe, could've, should've, maybe want to do something in 10 years, or 20 years, or whatever, when, you know, obviously, we're, we're facing some severe budget issues over the next couple of years.
I could go with the higher of the two, I mean, that certainly, it's not, I doubt it's going to come back 500,000, but if we sent it out for appraisal again, if we go with the higher of the two, I'd be inclined not to object to that. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would just mention the fact that real estate's worth what you can find a buyer to pay. So if we were to just put this on the market, say, we put it on the market for 225 or 250, see what the market bears. If we get offers of 180 or 200 or 150, that's going to tell us what the property's worth, costing us nothing, and we're putting it on the market.
Commissioner Pritchett?
We have the ability to reject bids if we think they're too low.
That's true. If, if this goes forward under whatever terms the board directs, whatever the higher, highest bid would be, we would be bringing it back to the board for your consideration.
Yeah, so maybe we should just let this go out to bid, and then we can determine at that time if we think it was equitable to the county.
That may work. Let me, let me ask you, Mr. Bate, in terms of that, do we have a suggested bid or a minimum bid? How do we normally handle that?
Well, what we put in this item, Commissioner, was that the minimum bid to bid on this would be the appraised value that we have, so it would be, 180 would be the minimum bid that would be accepted.
It just seems awfully low. I mean, even, even if we raised it to, we could do that, I guess we could always reject it.
Well, what would prevent us from asking 225?
I would feel better about that, I can tell you.
Yeah, you could do that.
And see what the bids come in at. Do you want to make that motion, Commissioner Smith? I would support that.
Sure, I'll make that motion. We put this property up for sale for $225,000.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that, I appreciate that, and I just, you know, if we got that, that's wonderful. If we don't, quite frankly, I'm not going to, I'm not going to pick up a night over it. Commissioners Nardi?
To be clear, this isn't going on the market for 180 or 225, it's going out to bid, correct?
It's going out to bid.
Yeah, so minimum, everyone will be bidding on this property. So it'll be sealed bids, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And so we, that we may get two responses, we may get 20. So starting that at 225, we're not listing it on the market in the MLS, is what I'm saying. The property's going out to bid.
Well, and the market's going to be the dictator. If we get no bids, that's your answer. So then we can put it out for, we can put it out for sale for 200.
If, if it's worth selling, that.
Right.
We really don't even have to do a minimum bid, because we can just say no, we can just put it out there and see what comes back on it.
Or that could bite us, though.
Yeah.
Wouldn't we have last say? You want to have a, some kind of streamline, so they go up from it.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it either way.
Okay, so we have your motion, Commissioner Smith, I went ahead and seconded it, I don't see any further discussion, so I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor of approving this with the modification of the minimum bid being, you said 225, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, sir.
225? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Even though it's a supermajority, that was an interesting wrinkle. All right, so that almost is it for consent, we've got one more item, F-32, we have a public comment card on that, Peter Carnesale from Viera.
Obviously, everybody here knows me already, so I don't have to go through much of an introduction. However, what you don't know, basically, is my background in terms of workforce, all right? Basically, back in 2002 and 2003, I worked for the Department of Labor of Florida. During that period of time, I was hired to rewrite the hiring practices for the hiring of veterans. In that period of time, I raised the productivity of the hiring people by 85% within that period of time. So I have a general knowledge of what the workforce is responsible for. The only reason that I never applied to go for any of those spots, all right, was that I felt that diversity was a lot more important than my being on that board. And I just want to know that the diversity problem, which was discussed before, has been solved. And if it has, then I have no problem with it.
Mr. Carnesale, we have two individuals that are listed, one of them is a, a black fellow, David Stills from Rockledge, the other is a white male, so it, it is more diverse than what previously came through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Great, may I have a motion? Perhaps Commissioner Tobias? All right, a motion to approve F-32 by Commissioner Tobias, I'll go ahead and second his motion to approve F as in Foxtrot 32, all in favor of approving F-32, say aye, aye. Any opposed? All right, F-32 passes unanimously. Bear with me just a moment, please. All right, we're going to move on to public comment, item G is in Gulf, we have one comment card on this, and in fact, we do have a public comment card under K as in Kilo, I may see if she wants to go early, though, so she's not sitting here unnecessarily. First item on G is Charles Tovey from Melbourne, and then if Ms. Sullivan, Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores, if she'd like to go after Mr. Tovey, she's welcome to, otherwise I'll leave her an item K as in Kilo. Welcome.
Thank you. Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. Know what I wrote on my card, but I did want to mention about the item just before the last, that there's a, going to be a boom in Beavard County from the Space Center, and that's what established Beavard to be on the map, was the Space Center. Right now, people are moving down, looking for locations, but the point of the matter is, is if Beavard County sells all their, and gets rid of all these, dumps all these[1776.08] is, if Brevard County sells all their, and gets rid of all these, dumps all these properties that aren't making monies for the county, then when they're looking for, they're going to need a place, and then they're going to spend extremist amounts of money to get that property. And I think we should save all our properties and look for other ways of finding monies. What I wrote on my card was about my property, and excuse me for taking so long, but every time I get straight on my property and ready to do things, somebody destroys or bothers my attempts. And while I was here last week, they looted my house and all my belongings, and took my clothes, kitchen stuff, my guitar, any way they could to bother my life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Thank you for the sheriff's office for immediately attending to the situation, and I just appreciate them doing their job for me. The other thing, and excuse me for being out of sorts today, the other thing was about the lagoon, and we have a scare about the algae, and I think that I've done enough that we won't have that problem, and I'll be concerning my effort more so on the area that's more prone to it. And I think I might have relieved that issue. If not, it will be relieved. And I have services that I'd like to volunteer for. One is the Brazilian pepper trees. At least, let me show you, and I can teach all these people the knowledge that I have, and that's one of the reasons why I first come up with public speaking, besides my daddy directed me up here to speak, and it's on my mirror, and I'll give you pictures and provide information. I think that's just about it for today. Oh, the dune line erosion, I forgot to speak about it, that it not only is going to waste being washed out, but it's ruining our surfing, and that's another reason why we have Brevard County in a good situation. But it's destroying the surf. No more surfing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. All right, Ms. Sullivan?
Good morning. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I wanted to come up because in watching the city of Satellite Beach Council meeting, it's my understanding that they're discussing with the county the releasing of the covenants on Hightower Park, which was purchased by the county back in 1993 for $18,000. We're particularly concerned that the discussions under the, forgive my language, guise of the non-differential parking to be able to give their residents a parking decal is not the real reason that they're pursuing this. In the covenants that the county put on that property, it's for all Brevard residents to use that property, and it says to be used solely as a public beach park. They're intending to put a large hotel across the road, and our concern as local residents is they will pursue putting food service, drinks, beach chairs, umbrellas on the beach. The issue with that is that was a preserve created to create a dark and understirred beach for the preservation of an endangered green sea turtle. When you look at the big picture of the lagoon with 46% of the seagrass is dying, according to Duane de Vries, the sea turtles have 60% higher PV virus due to contamination, according to UCF scientist Aaron Seeny. That preserve area becomes all the more important for the future of an endangered species. It was created 20 years ago, it's more important today. I also want to point out something. Congress required, when they sold that South Base housing, that the Air Force give the final approval on a development plan. They did that in 2004 with the concept plan, but to my knowledge, haven't done on this one. When the preserve was created, both the city and the county did ordinances, because in order to implement the preserve agreement, it was agreed that the property across the street would be capped at 999 units. Both the county and the city, the county was partner, we have documents showing that. And then the military, I want to give you these documents, the military pushed for 15, almost 1,600 units on that property. And I believe the county did the right thing at that time and said no, and then they went to the city, and the city said yes. And then when the city went to move the density from the preserve over, the county said no. But the preserve agreement is very specific, that density on the preserve was to be taken off the build-out rule. I am going to give you this stuff. I would ask you guys, if you guys could put some attention on the military to request that they deny this development plan, and then also deny the releasing of the covenants that park is for all of Brevard.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. If you want to give it to the clerk staff, then they can certainly put it in the minutes as well, just on the far end. Thanks. And then we'll have it, you know, both here and also in the minutes. All right, that's it for public comment, under both G and K, so I'll consider G and K both closed and addressed now. Let's see, moving on here, public hearings. Do we want to address H1 first, or do we want to try to crank out the others that are real quick, just to get them out of here? Yeah, we're going to go ahead and crank out some pretty quick here that are relatively uncontroversial, so that we don't have folks sitting for too long that aren't here on the tough item. So H2, which is the Sea Ray Drive Bridge, I'd entertain a motion to approve. All right, a motion from Commissioner Tabia, I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approving item H as in Hotel 2, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, H2 passes unanimously. H3. All right, we have a motion to approve H3 by Commissioner Pritchett. We have a second by Commissioner Nardi. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of approving H as in Hotel 3, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. No nays, correct? Okay, no nays. Passes unanimously. H4, let's take a look here. Okay, may I have a motion to approve H as in Hotel 4? Motion from Commissioner Pritchett, I'll go ahead and second the approval of H4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? H4 passes unanimously. All right, so we'll circle back to H1, and then we're going to see how we do here. In terms of time, Ms. Bentley, the minimum that you would recommend giving folks is two minutes? What do you think?
It's 3% to your rules.
Three?
You can amend it with a board vote, but below three minutes, there's no case law below three, so I recommend you stay at three.
Three it is, unless someone wants to make a motion to the contrary. All right, we'll go ahead with H1, and we'll start up with, if you all want, with public comment, where we can try to let folks know where we are, and then perhaps if the public comment's unnecessary is to their point, because we're already on one side of the issue, maybe that could save some time. What would you like, Commissioner Tabia? This is in your district.
Thank you, I'd like to hear public comment.
All right, we'll do that. Mr. Sansom. From Cocoa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, sir.
I'm Jerry Sansom, I'm the Brevard Commissioner for the Florida Island Navigation District. I think most of y'all are familiar with the district, but for those that aren't, we are a special taxing district on the east coast of Florida, and we have two roles. One is to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to assist in managing and maintaining the intercoastal waterway through the state of Florida. We do that by acquiring property and building spoil management sites for the Corps of Engineers to use in their dredging program. We also work with the counties and cities in providing grants for y'all to improve your boating facilities, and to new parks, waterway access, also to help y'all acquire your own spoil sites, which we did last year, I think, or the year before last. And so, you know, our role is to help maintain the intercoastal waterway as an economic engine for the east coast of Florida. As I said, one of our major roles is to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to provide spoil sites for them to use when they dredge the waterway. The land exchange we're talking about here today is a great example of cooperation between us and the county. About almost 30 years ago, we acquired this property to be used as a spoil site. In doing our due diligence, it became clear that our site had a lot of scrub jays on it, and in working with y'all's environmentally endangered lands program, it became clear that your adjacent land didn't have as many scrub jays as our land did. So they approached us about doing a land swap, so that y'all would get the scrub jays, we'd get the land we needed to work on, and everybody would come out ahead. And that's basically where we are. We've been working on that for a number of years. We've gotten to the point now where we need to move on developing our management site, either our existing site or the site with the transferred land. We can go either way. Any wetlands impacts will be on our land, they will be mitigated for according to state and federal requirements. And, but the bottom line on this is, if you approve this transfer, it will put better scrub jay habitat under your Eels program than you have today, and we will be able to continue to do our function of helping maintain the Atlantic intercoastal waterway, working with the Corps of Engineers. And this really is a win-win for both parties. But the bottom line is, if somebody thinks that by opposing this transfer, they're going to stop us from building a spoil management site, we'll just, we'll have to build it on our existing site rather than the improved site, and that's all it comes down to. But we'd like to give y'all better scrub jays, and not have to mitigate for as many as we're going to have to mitigate for, and I think it gives y'all a better program. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. We've got our executive director here that can handle any technical questions about the land, the transfer history, or any of the other things that we've been working on with y'all.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll have Michelle Smurl from Cocoa. And then just for folks benefiting the audience, so you know when to line up or when to be ready, we'll have Kim Ruzenka afterward, then Lisa Schmidt, then Vince Lamb, then Gary Cameron, Kim Zerillo, Mark Nathan, Sandra Sullivan, and I'll give you some more at that point. All right, you've got the floor, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm reading this for Dave Breninger, Dr. Dave Breninger, and I am from Brevard Zoo, 22-year employee, and I've been working with Dave and scrub jays and within the county for over two decades. So I'm going to read this for Dave. I have been conducting research on Florida scrub jay population relationships with habitat quality for the last four decades, and published these studies in over 30 scientific studies, articles. I have been performing environmental impact analysis, developing and monitoring scrub restoration projects in Brevard County for the last 40 years, and wish to explain the benefits of the proposed find land swap. The original find site comprises about half of an area having the highest scrub quality left in Brevard, and the land swap would protect most of this area. The scrub with the highest quality area is in the center of the conservation land, and has outstanding plant composition with open sandy areas amongst the scrub oaks, palmettos, and grasses. These open sandy areas are critical for the long-term Florida scrub jay reproductive success, and are important to many unique plants and animals. A benefit of the land swap is to conserve a much larger contiguous landscape by putting the disposal site to the edge of the conservation area, rather than subdividing the conservation area. Scrub jays live in family groups, where breeders stay together for life, and allow young to remain as a family group member called a helper for many years. Helpers assist their family detect and mob predators, and feed future generations of young. Contiguous landscapes are important because families maintain sentinels to spot predators. Helpers can survey surrounding territories for breeding vacancies without making risky dispersal forays, which decreases their mortality risk. Families are beneficial, benefited by being surrounded by other families of scrub jays residing in these areas, are prone to produce in excess of young that can support smaller fragments of habitat that don't have similar ability. The Eels land being swapped generally includes poorer quality habitat and requires much time and restoration cost, and most certainly would never reach the same habitat quality. Families living on edges of habitat are more prone to predation, as edges respond less favorably to fire management, because edges tend to burn less efficiently, making them difficult and expensive to restore and maintain. Habitat managed for scrub jays also benefits many other threatened or endangered species, including gopher tortoises, scrub lizards, indigo snakes, and many other unique animals and plants. I'm running out of time. I'm going to skip to, Dave is a long-term member of Florida scrub jay recovery team, he's a charter member. He was asked to convey that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service supports this action because it's vital to the larger focal landscape recovery strategy. We have the support behind this from the government, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ruzenka? Now, if you tell me you drew that yourself, I'll be thoroughly impressed.
No, this is from the Eels program. But it did take an engineering company to print it.
Commissioner Loeb, I represent four property owners of 70 acres. I'm going to ask for 10 minutes. I tried to do it faster.
What would you all like to do? All right, you'll make a motion for 10 minutes. I'll go ahead, I'll second the motion for 10 minutes. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please, sir.
Will those property owners be speaking as well?
They're not.
Question to Ms. Bentley?
Please.
Does that cause any problems, Ms. Bentley, providing one speaker 10 minutes, and everyone else three minutes?
She's representing four individuals, so I think that's actually two minutes short of what the individuals would be.
Actually, one of the individuals is speaking, Mr. Cameron is speaking, but, so nine minutes. I could do it in nine.
Sounds good.
Shall we take the motion and be nine then? Commissioner Pritchett? All right, that'll be my second as well. All in favor of providing nine minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. My name is Kim Ruzenka, I'm with Lacy Lyons-Ruzenka of Rockledge, and I'm representing the parties listed on the presentation page. There are three large parcels of land addition to the county land totaling 70.5 acres. Bad decisions made with good intentions are still bad decisions. That is what you have here with the exchange agreement. This is a flawed deal with inadequate public benefit for the costs associated with the deal, for which you have insufficient data to make an informed decision, which is why you should not approve this agreement. You've heard the county will get an increase in acres of scrub jay land, and the deal is good for the county. What you have not heard is the value of the county property that's being given to find, the environmental problems with the find parcel, the cost to manage and maintain the extra acres of land from find, or even the legal description of the find parcel. Except for the relative value of the parcels to be swapped, which is available at the property appraiser's website, you cannot have the other information, because no due diligence has been done on the find parcel to be deeded to the county. We believe this is contrary to the requirements of the Eel Land Acquisition Manual, and its procedures set forth on this flow chart, adopted by the county commission in 2013. My client's parcels of land abut the county land as shown on page one of the package I just gave to you. That circled land on the east next to the railroad is the 15 acres of land left over. That red marking is the county land. So this is actually dividing the land, and there's no indication of what's going to happen with that 15 acres. The long history of discussion between the Nature Conservancy, the Eel program, and find is on page two of the packet. The original location for the spoil site was decided in 1989. Find obtained the land by eminent domain in 1993. The county obtained this land in 1995 from the Atlantic Ridge Company due to mitigation. The Nature Conservancy first brought this exchange idea to Eel in 1998, 22 years ago. Obviously, there's been no rush. no rush to consummate this land swap. As I said, this is a flawed deal. These documents I've provided to you previously, so you've seen them, but they're now in color. Exhibit 1 is the actual land swap. It's a better copy of what you have in your package. Exhibit 2 is the exchange notice published in Florida Today in February of this year. It provides no real details and inaccurately states that find will provide documents related to the property. The county actually has a responsibility to obtain all records related to the find parcel after you, the commission, approve this agreement. Exhibit 3, which is the first tab with your colored tab on the side, is the most damning evidence that this is a bad deal. This is the county property, tax parcel 2980046. It has a market value of $585,470. That's likely low because it's government land, but it's still $6,946 an acre. That has a market value of $481,768 of land that's being given to find. According to property appraisers' records, the next page, Page 4, Exhibit 4, is that the find land has approximate value of $1,000 an acre for a total market value of $83,180. Subtracting those values, the county is giving away almost $400,000 worth of land. So Section 4 of the exchange agreement, the stipulations of the Eel parcel and the find parcel are approximately equal in value, is a blatant misstatement. To add further insult, the county is agreeing to pay find an additional $88,823.38 per find's 1992 cost. The county expects to pay $41,000 to obtain a survey, environmental work, title work, and other due diligence on the find parcel. All total, this even exchange will cost the county $528,401. Over time, the county will incur management and maintenance costs on the increased acreage, but those costs have not been supplied to you as they should have per the regulations of the Eel manual. The inadequate public benefit. Over time, the second reason you should deny the agreement is that as this is eel land that's being given away, there are threatened and endangered species on the county property. On Exhibit 5, there's a list of species likely to occur on the county site, and this was provided to the DEP by find with their ERP permit in 2019. There are scrub jays, there's snail kites, there's woodpeckers, wood storks, and the east indigo snake. Those species are not going to be protected if this land is exchanged. Additionally, the county parcel has valuable scrub jay habitat. Find has to pay scrub jay mitigation an amount of $573,600 to the scrub jay conservation fund, which is managed by the Nature Conservancy. So the county loses $528,000 based upon the advice of the Nature Conservancy, and the Nature Conservancy will get $573,600 from this exchange. More importantly, there's not been any evidence presented. There's an actual need for the county to own the find parcel. There are statements in the resolution that you're asked to adopt that says the exchange would be, quote, "in the public interest," but that is pure conjecture. Is the find parcel really so much better for scrub jays than the county parcel? Do we really need additional scrub jay habitat, or should we concentrate on restoration and management of those already owned by the county? A 2007 assessment of the area's scrub jay habitat, which is Exhibit 7, there are four pages, indicates that south and central Brevard meta-populations had greater connectivity and viability than in the past. This is in 2007. The assessment all contains a diagram of 21 Florida meta-populations, which is the second colored tab in your packet, showing that the habitats of scrub jay are already prevalent. Finally, what is the public benefit of leaving 15 acres of county land that remains after the exchange between the spoil site, the DMMA, and the railroad to the east? Assuming this remnant also has protected species, since it's an eel management, it would be cut from the other protected land. Finally, there's insufficient information for the county to proceed. I've already stated some of them, but these insufficiencies are apparent when you review the Eel manual and this chart. I show you this chart because it's really hard to follow. It's kind of a crazy chart, and it's inconsistent with what is actually stated in the manual. This was adopted in 2013 by the county at the request of the Eel program. So I have provided a portion of the Eel manual in Exhibit 8. Most important is that on Page 27, which is on your third tab, quote, "Inherent in the exchange concept is the requirement to get dollar-for-dollar value. Exchanges are attractive in that they do not increase the land holdings and do not require funds for purchase," end quote. That's in the Eel manual. Here, you're not getting dollar-for-dollar value. Land holdings do increase, and there are funds required for the purchase. And there's a budget reallocation to be executed by the county manager. I'm not real clear on what that is. The staff report doesn't explain it. But if that's true, then this requires additional procedures per the Eel manual because this is now a land sale and not a land transfer. The county already has two policies for land transfers. One is policy BCC 24, an administrative order of 37, which outlines the process for county property transfers. Yet, Eel does not have to comply with either of those for unknown reasons. On Page 28 of the manual, it says the exchange proposal is to, quote, "provide an overview of the anticipated management cost of the new property, including the estimated initial and annual management costs." That has not been provided to you at all. You don't know what you're going to pay or what the county or taxpayer is going to pay to maintain this land that find is giving. Also, you do not have actual appraisals of either parcel, boundary surveys, hazardous waste reports, title reports, justification for the exchange, program and administrative consequences, or information for an evaluation of the true economic impacts of the exchange. Those are things in the Eel manual that are required that you don't have. Hopefully, you see that the approval of the exchange agreement would be a bad decision for the county despite the good intentions of Eel. Please vote down the exchange agreement. Appreciate your time and attention.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we'll have Lisa Schmidt from Grant. Welcome.
I've never done this before. I need to introduce myself.
It's all right. If you'd like to, you don't have to.
Well, I own Brevard Equestrian Center. In the little picture that's on the screen here that I assume you guys can see, the blue arrow is kind of pointing right towards the weird-shaped piece that sticks out towards the west and out towards the north, and the part that sticks out towards the north touches the little red line that brings the sludge pit even closer to my property, where we have 2 drinking wells, 3 agricultural wells that are going to be tested every 30 to 90 days, I think. So, I mean, my biggest problem is with the sludge pit. It creates a bigger problem, because I know that's not what we're talking about here, but it creates a bigger problem when it's that much closer to my kids, my horses, my business, basically all of my retirement income, because it's all tied up in the land that's going to most likely not be worth as much once there's a giant sludge pit next door. So I just want you to not exchange the property, and we'll deal with whether or not we can do any fighting about the actual sludge pit at another time. So that's it.
Easy peasy. Thank you. All right, Mr. Lamb from Merritt Island. Any scrub jays on that shirt?
Yeah, I thought about wearing a scrub jay shirt today, but I wisely decided not to. Vince Lamb, South Merritt Island. Morning, Commissioners. The Brevard County Environmentally Endangered Lands Program has enjoyed high levels of public support for more than 30 years. Brevard County voters approved the ad valorem taxes to fund the program in 1990 and 2004 with approximately 70% margins. Many residents care about protecting natural areas and wildlife, even if they never take a hike. The Selection and Management Committee, a group of conservation scientists appointed by the county commission, deserves great credit for the leadership that has built its confidence over the years. Most of their recommendations end up flowing to the county commission because money's involved, and the overwhelming majority of their recommendations have been approved. The find land swap has been moving forward for many years, as you've heard. The SMC has been tracking it through every step and voted to approve the swap in 2009 and again in 2015. In both of those years, the county commission approved the concept and agreed to share in the design costs incurred by find to move the basin. A group of us, some speaking today, visited the site last Friday. Until Mike Knight pointed out the habitat differences, none of us could really see the benefits of the swap. However, the SMC has long recognized that the property that we are gaining has far better habitat than the property that we are trading away. Then comes the Florida scrub jay. These population viability assessments have shown that the jays are moving toward extinction in Florida in total and in Brevard County, and that this property is connected to the most important habitat for scrub jays in Brevard County. Approximately 10,000 acres of Eel program properties provide habitat for scrub jays. If you don't care about the jays, these properties also protect the lagoon and the St. John's River from nutrient pollution. I understand some neighbors oppose the land swap because they don't want the dredge materials deposited on the site. Does it really matter whether the dredge materials are deposited on the find land currently owned or the new property? If you fail to approve the swap, find seems certain to send the dredge materials to the currently owned land. Bo Platt wanted to be here today, but had to go to Jacksonville to take his father to a doctor's appointment. Bo lives on the Agali River and has watched the muck removal there closely. Many neighbors oppose the muck removal because of foul odors. Bo would say there have been no foul odors, and that was a big success. So I encourage you to follow the recommendations of the SMC and approve the swap. Allow the Eel program to preserve the best habitat and let the dredge materials go to the inferior land.
Thank you, sir. Please, Commissioner Tobias. Mr. Lamb?
Just to be clear, Mr. Lamb, you are in favor of this exchange?
Yes, I am. I'm encouraging you to follow the SMC's recommendation.
I'm sure you're aware of your August 14 article in which you didn't insinuate, but stated that the board does not place an interest in the residents. As you're going to see, there's probably four or five times the amount of residents that are against this as for those that are for it. In fact, you are not even a resident of this area. So how would you reconcile, in fact, you go as far as stating that the electorate should vote people who serve the residents. How do you reconcile that comment?
Well, first, I think in this time of COVID, we couldn't get many residents up on the parish landing property because of the specific residents there were afraid of COVID. Maybe we don't have that situation here. I don't know. I also think that the concern of the residents on the other property had to do with the threat of flooding, and I think it was a very real threat of flooding. Here, I think that the concern of the residents is a bit misunderstood in terms of the harm that the dredging is going to do. I think residents oppose dredging everywhere. Generally, we've kind of watched that the fears of the residents aren't realized by dredgings.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. So in other words, we're only supposed to listen to the residents that agree with your opinion. Is that correct?
Well, no. I encourage you to look at the real facts on this. And again, it comes back to the Selection and Management Committee, scientists that you guys have appointed, and I sort of believe that you listen to their recommendation, not mine.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Gary Cameron from Grant. Thank you all so much for your patience as well. You've got the floor, sir.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying that both of these properties that are in question are very sensitive properties. They all have scrub jays. I walk the woods out there all the time, and I would say that there's no larger group of scrub jays in one area versus the other. I have property that abuts this. But the impact that this DMA will have on the scrub jay community out there will be devastating. The only difference between these two properties that are questionable in this land swap is one of them abuts residents. So the residents and the business that abuts this property that has 50-plus horses on it will be affected by this land swap. The construction and operation of this pit is harmful to the people and the horses that surround it. From the dust during the construction, because we're on a sand ridge, it's very, it can be very dusty under construction, the smell that will be in the air, to the pollution, to the groundwater. Test wells have been put around this site that are literally 100 feet from residents' wells. So if there was a breach in a test well, then it will show up into a residence well whenever they test it, meaning that we've been bathing and drinking breached water from this site. I have been to the DMA site in Palm Bay. I've talked to the residents that live next to the DMA, and they're not happy living next to the DMA. They say that the dump trucks that come and go, the track hoes that are slamming their buckets all the time, between the noise, the dust coming from the dump trucks, and the mounted dump trucks that go in and out of the place, there's a lot of dust, there's a lot of noise. It's very irritating, they say. They say whenever the sites are active, meaning that the dredging is being pumped into them, the smell is horrendous. And that's what y'all are trying to decide if you're going to put next to us, and that's why we're here today. So all I ask you is that, you know, think about what the consequences are when you approve this land swap, when you're putting this right on our fence line. That's all we're asking. We're not asking for anything more out of you guys. We know that all you have is the control of this land swap. And what I ask, please, just rule in the favor of the people that are going to be affected by this, and that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we'll have Kim Zerillo from Melbourne Village. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Good morning. Well, I have served on the SMC committee, and I'm a representative of the TDC on the SMC right now. What I'd like to say is, I'm not an attorney, however, would like to correct a couple of points made by the attorney representing the homeowners. And I would like to point out, if you can show the aerial where the property boundaries are overlaid so we can see the sand ridge. Okay, so some of the species that the attorney mentioned may fly over or utilize that site, but they don't necessarily live on that site. And so they have larger ranges of habitat or home areas, such as snail kite, which would be flying over those sites in transition and may feed there. The cost benefit on a dollar-for-dollar value is not the only mechanism that the county looks at for conservation value. So we're looking for a greater conservation value, a consolidation of conservation area and connectivity so that it is less expensive to monitor and manage. So if you have pieces distantly apart and you need to do prescribed burns, which we want because we don't want our homes burned because fire has built up and a fire load has built up and hasn't been managed. So that's one capture that we're trying to do and one consolidation of costs so it's easier and cheaper to manage lands that are connected directly. Also, there's other species other than scrub jay, and there's important recharge value to residents of the county, which we don't have a dollar value on. So the concerns of having a dredge spoil basin next to property, I understand, I get, and that's important. If you look at this aerial, and I don't know if you can see, but over where it's very white, that trans, like a line between the outer boundaries, is actually very high porous drainage. So if you want to keep the basin on very high drainage, that is where more drainage is going to incur. Now, they intend to add a clay layer to... Now, they intend to add a clay layer to, to make it impermeable, and so that it doesn't percolate down to the groundwater. And I'm glad that they've installed monitoring wells, so people will know in real time. Sorry, so.
Sure, you can, you can finish your thought, though.
Okay. So I think it's really important to look at the lay of the land. It's not just the species, but the lay of land. And what the residents are asking, they, I don't want one at all. I would encourage you to accept the transfer, but the value of doing the recharge area and doing a basin and a recharge is actually more troublesome to, to humans.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll have Mark Nathan from Satellite Beach.
Welcome.
Yes, sir.
Me, Mark Nathan, Satellite Beach. I was on the REAC Committee with Mike Knight for the Eels Program for 12 years. I've worked with the Marine Resource Council for water testing and the FWC for years doing bird counts, including two pelican rookeries. I'm speaking here today in favor of the land swap. In 25 years, the Florida scrub jay population is down over 50% and have already been extirpated from seven counties in Florida. Scrub jays extremely habitat-specific and rely on fire-dominated oak scrub habitat. The iconic Florida scrub jay, the most endearing bird I've had the pleasure to engage, is remarkable. Its trusting character uncommon. I cannot imagine not doing everything humanly possible to champion their rights to life. This long-planned land swap has been thoroughly vetted through the Eels SMC Scientific Committee, and they have concluded the exchange would be an important step in the long-term protection of the Florida scrub jay population in Brevard County. Because of the close proximity of these parcels, I do not understand the opposition for the exchange. FINE will still be there, and so will Eels regardless. Furthermore, I know Mike Knight with the Eels Program, and I know he will address all concerns regarding this exchange to all parties. This fun little bird is running out of time and space. It's not asking any more than any of us would, save a place for me. If not, they too will go the way of the ivory-billed woodpecker or the countless other creatures who have gone before because of our indifference or complacency or neglect. Please consider wisely this land exchange for what it is, a chance to do what's right for us and for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll have Ms. Sullivan from South Patrick Shores up next, and then just to give you all the pecking order after that, we'll have David Montgomery, we'll have Mark Crosley, Lauralee Thompson, then Teri Castro.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I think it was about a month ago, I attended a four-hour-long Eel session on scrub jays, and it, it really was a very much big awakening to learn about this Florida, our Florida state bird, so gorgeous. What we're seeing is, according to this four-hour session I attended, is that the scrub jays in the north part of Brevard is not really viable anymore to really protect. And so they're looking to other areas, and it all hinges on, on having larger tracts of, of land for their preservation. At the current, we have right here in Brevard, scientists that have dedicated decades that were in on that, on that discussion and presentations that were going on, a lot of scientific material. And I think it's always best to refer back to the scientific literature and the facts and let data drive decisions. But the fact is that this national, this, sorry, the state bird is expected to go extinct in about the next 20 years, and when you have little pockets of land, that there's not the, the, what do you say, the, 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 sorry, genetic material to keep them viable. So you need bigger tracts. And the issue for Eels is this, this is really, this project here was counted on for like 20 years as going to be to give them that tract that's going to help them keep, keep these violation, these populations viable. I have a friend who took a very endearing photo of some scrub jays who flew in her hair and were playing in her hair, it's bizarre, but she loves to go to the Helen and Alan Crickshank Sanctuary, and she's very worried that particular property is all now boxed in with development. And with Brevard on massive growth, what we're going to see is, we're going to see increasing pressure to develop these areas. So when you have an opportunity to get a larger tract than you already have that has, according to the scientists who have looked at it, a much, and they have the scientific basis for evaluation, you can't just go on dollars, you know, and look at a property. It's whether it, they think that this is going to be the property that is going to mean the survival of a particular species. So David Behringer wrote, I'm going to just finish this writing here, sorry, a paragraph, "The eel's land being swapped generally includes poorer quality habitat and requires much time and restoration costs, and most certainly would never reach the same habitat quality. Families living on edges of the habitat are more prone to predation, as edges respond less favorably to fire management, because edges tend to burn less efficiently, making them difficult and expensive." I got one sentence, if that's okay?
One sentence is good.
"Making them difficult and expensive to restore and maintain habitat managed," this is the sentence. "The managed, the scrub jays also benefits many other threatened or endangered species." And there's a last, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sullivan, I'm sorry. I didn't pick up on it. Are you in favor?
Yes, I, I'm in favor of the exchange because it's two years that the people, the scientists that have been involved in this have been very anxious.
And for future reference, the state bird?
Sorry?
The state bird's a mockingbird.
The, the state bird was.
State bird is the mockingbird.
It may be now, but it was a scrub jay in the past? No? Am I wrong on that?
I'm, I'm, the state bird is currently the mockingbird.
Okay. I, I will look it up, because I did see that.
Poor flamingos. All right, next up, we have David Montgomery. And as he comes up, I know we have a slide, Logan, if we can get that up. And just for everyone's benefit, please, if you want us to show slides in the future, you've got to give it to us, you know, well enough in advance. We almost didn't have a chance to review this, but I did have a chance to look at it this morning. So we'll go ahead and get that up if we can, Logan, please. Thank you.
Okay, I'm David Montgomery from Palm Bay. I've lived in this area for 35 years, jogged this area back in my younger days. I wanted to follow up on Kim Zerillo's comment that the new property, if you can see the white there over the left section, that's at an extremely high elevation for that area. It's about 20, 21 feet. It's the Atlantic Ridge, and there's ancient sand from the beach in that area. It's, it's quite different than the other property. So maintaining this property for, for whatever reason, scrub jays or just habitat, is quite a bit easier than the current property because of the different types of tree vegetation and thickness of the vegetation that's in these areas. Getting this land would be acquiring a, an incredible geographic, geographically valuable piece of land. So there's benefits for Brevard County. We get more land for the Eels Program. There are less maintenance costs because you don't have to clear out live oak trees, scrub oaks, and other property that's not, that's not currently as thick or dense on this ideal property that we're moving to. The Florida inland management, or Florida Indian Navigation District doesn't, isn't moving their pond. It's still going to be inside those two areas. Half of the pond will be on one area to the left or one area to the right. So we're not really moving the pond by doing this property swap to any significant extent. And I think as Kim or Ms. Sullivan pointed out, there are clay liners on the bottoms of these ponds that, that inhibit any runoff from going into the groundwater. So go to the next slide. Just to sum up, moving the property east will reduce FINE pipeline length, reduce their costs, risks, and property impacts. So there's a benefit to FINE. We benefit, Brevard County, from the improved quality of land. It is different property. It's a geographic gem. We're up on H. Seashore, it's perfect for scrub jays. If you visit this property, you'd be astounded at what it looks like. There's beach sand there, and maintenance costs are reduced because the habitat is just perfect and conducive to scrub jay habitat and preserving this for future generations. So my recommendation is to approve the agreement. That's all I've got.
Thank you. And whoever's got the phone, if you could please try to mute it, it would certainly be much appreciated. Next up, we'll have Mark Crosley from Jupiter.
Commissioner Siskel, as a representative of the, of the owner of the land, I'd like to, to speak with you last.
Ms. Bentley, what, what would you suggest? Do you think there's any problem with that?
No problem.
Any objection up here? Okay, we'll take you last, certainly. Ms. Thompson? And as you're coming up, I just want to thank you for your help with the, the TPO meeting last week. I certainly appreciate the way that that went.
You're welcome. I'm Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS, Florida. And I was a TDC rep on the SMC for six years, and I participated in both of the votes, you know, in favor of the land swap in 2009, 2015. This was a high-priority project that we talked about numerous times during the years that I was there. A lot of research has gone into it. This is a piece of property, there's, there's not many pieces of property like this that left, that are left. Pristine Atlantic coastal ridge, there's just not much like it. We have two dredge sites in MEMS, both of which have had spoil dumped on them. There hasn't been any problems. One of them actually has a high-end RV park right next to it, so there's people that live in half-million-dollar RVs right next to the dredge fill site. Hasn't been any problem at all. They, they actually have turned into really nice birding sites. The, the spoil will only go in a por, a smaller portion of the site, and it is much better habitat for the scrub jays. And you have to think about, you know, the scrub jay, it's, it is Florida's only endemic bird. It's not the state bird, but it's the only endemic bird, and it's highly sought after by birders when they come to, to the state. And it, it would be a real black mark for Brevard County, which has one of the highest populations of scrub jays remaining in the state. It would be a real black mark against us if we lose that mainland population. So we got a pretty good population out on the Wildlife Refuge, but the mainland population is really in jeopardy. And so by getting this piece of property and, and having it be adjacent to other scrub property that the Eel, Eel Program is managing would be highly, highly beneficial. Much better, and it's much better habitat for the birds than the existing eel property. So in my opinion, this is a, this is a good, a good exchange, and we should move forward with it. I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Teri Castro from the Atlantic.
Thank you, I'm Teri Castro, NLR. Thank you, sir.
Oh, I apologize.
That's all right. It's happened before. So first of all, thank you, Commissioners, for your service. You guys are in an unenviable spot. Almost always when I come to these meetings, you're faced with a decision that's going to leave somebody, leaving the room unhappy with the decision. And kudos to you for being in the arena and taking up the battle. I'm here to speak in favor of the transfer. I sent all of you, copied an email of a, like a one-page summary of what I have learned about this. I'll tell you, I'm not a scrub jay expert. I haven't been involved with any of these transfers or this kind of issue. I have been involved with muck mediation areas through the work on the Citizens Oversight Committee and support for the, the sorrel plan. And frankly, I'm a little concerned because we started comment before, we sort of heard both sides, it's like the jury, please decide, we're going to hear, I don't know, what, we're going to hear, we're going to hear from the jury before we, we hear from the, the protagonists and the antagonists. So I'm not sure what, what evidence you've had before you, what you've looked at. I've looked at, as I said in my, my email, you know, I've looked at the transfer, I've looked at the documents, I went back and looked at the May 5th meeting to see what, if anything, had transpired there. And I've seen a fair amount of material from FINE, or from Eels, I'd say coordinated with FINE, that addressed some of the criticisms that were raised about the way this process was set up and what's in the transfer and so on. So I feel like those criticisms have been answered. I think fundamentally, what I'm hearing from the, the speakers so far who have spoken against the transfer is that we don't want a pit there, we don't want a basin. And whether the basin moves 500 or 800 feet further east is, is not germane to that discussion. This is all about, we don't, we don't want dredge material anywhere near our property. That's a, that's a separate issue. Take that aside for a minute, and take away the scrub jays even for a minute. I look at this thing and look at the land that's being swapped between the two parties, and to me, it's apparent that it's better for both, both parties. You've heard some of the comments about the land that Eel will be getting is more suitable for the scrub jay population, and the land that FINE will be receiving is, you know, closer to the river and, and has some small but beneficial impact to, to their cost of operation. So that's all I have to say. I'm in favor of it. I'm not a homeowner, I don't live near the boundary of that, but I reaffirm and, and support these comments I've made about a dredge pit in this area is, is not trash in the home values and those other alarms that are raised by people. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mark Crosley from Jupiter.
I'm here today to mostly answer any questions and maybe sway or correct any misinformation that may be shared, but I would like to tell you, it seems like a lot of the concern about the dredge material moving closer to people's homes, that's not unusual. We have 20 to 25, about 25 of these sites up and down the east coast of Florida. They've all operated, we, it's not unusual to have a lot of opposition to those before they're built. I can tell you that I do not get a lot of complaints once they're constructed. In fact, there's a lot of misinformation about those sites as they're constructed. They all have buffers around them, they're well-operated, they're well-engineered, they're multimillion-dollar structures, and we, it's, the waterway to, to just Brevard County is worth 1.4 billion a year. So we're maintaining this infrastructure, and the proper way to do it is with these dredge material management areas. In past, they used to sidecast this material on the spoil islands that impacted the waterway. There's marginal waterway improvements when we do dredging to get the fine sediments out of there. We're going to do the, we do need to maintain the waterway, it's a system. And other than that, I'd like, I'd answer any questions.
Any questions? No, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's it for public comment cards. Commissioner Tavaya, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll tell you where I am and then I'll put a disclaimer. I tried to tackle this as objectively as possible because I have received more negatives for this exchange than I have positives. So I took this as a fiscal approach. First comment that probably pricked your ears that you heard from Ms. Rosenka was the value difference of these two pieces of property. I don't think this is a fair comparison. This is going from one government agency to another government agency. So the same way that you transfer a quick claim deed on a property from a parent to a child for $100, doesn't make that property worth $100. So we are not in the business of selling this land, so the value is going to remain in government hands, whether it's the county government or whether it's the state government. It has no impact on taxpayers. However, there are some impacts on taxpayers that one should take into account. First of all, the engineering costs have already been expended on this new site, and that would be a sunk cost should this exchange not go through. In other words, FINE has made it very clear that they are going to use one of these two locations for dredging. locations for dredging material. If they use their current piece of property, that sunk cost could not be used to do the engineering on that new piece of property. In other words, there would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, what you would probably hear is that's not county funds, but I try never to look at it from that perspective. We all pay sales tax, so we all pay into the state coffers as well. And when we look at demucking, one of the largest costs on demucking is the transfer of that material to other, a location where it's going to be dewatered. This puts it in much closer proximity to the place in which we are removing it. Now, my understanding is that as we expend these funds, these will be, if FINE is going to do this, these are probably state funds, hopefully, that do it, but as hopefully we get back in track and more money comes, I hope there's the possibility for more demucking in the future. Maybe at our expense. And if that comes at our expense, I certainly hope that we could go to FINE as we have in the past and say, hey, you have a site, do we have the ability to use that? I appreciate Ms. Rosenka looking out for the landowners. It's the first time I'd ever heard her use scrub jays in a positive. Just, and I understand the concerns of those citizens. To them, it may be a negative impact. However, I look at this for not only those citizens, but all of the citizens in District 3 and countywide. And I think that while this may have a negative impact, or at least a perceived negative impact on five or six or 50 people, whatever the case may be, remember, this dredge material, whether it's on that property or the one adjacent, it's going to come there according to FINE. So, from purely financial, purely financial, because I don't want anyone to think that Mr. Lamb's threats had anything to do with my making a decision. This is just the one instance when my opinion and his align. I have to support this. However, constantly, we make decisions, right or wrong, and we go with the commissioner whose district an event may be in. And I'd like to say that please vote your conscience. Don't vote the way that I am. This item deals with the lagoon, and the lagoon impacts the entire county. It is based in agreement with a state agency, which again, has implications that are far more reaching than County Commission District 3. It impacts EALs, which is a countywide program, and all county taxpayers have an interest in ensuring sound policy. So, while I will be voting yes for this land swap, one that, by the way, started while I was in high school, I fully respect your decision on either side of it.
All right, we'll have Commissioner Pritchett, then Commissioner Rizardi, then Commissioner Smith. Oh, did you? Okay. As I said, Commissioner Rizardi.
He just rubbing it in that you're younger than the rest of us up here, I think.
I'm the youngest.
Oh, are you?
I think by a little bit.
Oh.
I have the least hair, but I am the youngest.
I apologize. I thought Commissioner Tobias. You know, we just talked last week and a couple of meetings ago about, you know, transferring, paying for government employees that weren't even ours. So, as far as money between government agencies, I don't know if I agree with that assessment. It says clearly in their manual that it's value dollar for dollar. So, with that aside, you know, this does impact the residents, you know, like it or not, we cannot measure whether or not it's going to smell out there for those guys or whether or not, but what we do, what we can gather is it is probably going to affect their property values. It is. I mean, and that's hard to put a value on. So, I mean, it's not my area. You know, if we were so concerned about the scrub j population, why didn't EALs purchase a better piece of property to begin with? Or why are we so adamant, or why is FINE so adamant? And I realize that's the job that they have, to, you know, put that sludge wherever they have to, you know? Let's preserve it all if our primary focus is the scrub j. So, I won't be supporting this, and I could go into, you know, some of what Ms. Rosenka said, I agree with, some of it I don't, but I think, I think the dollar value for me and the residents are my primary reasons because they're still going to be able to put the material there if need be, so I'm not going to be supporting this.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I've heard these arguments and concerns, and if I lived there, I probably would feel much the same way, except that I don't live there, and I look at it a little bit more objectively, I think. And I think one comment that was made that really hits home for me, the dredge material is going to come, and if it's on a contiguous piece of property, it's not going to change the smell one way or the other. I don't think it's going to change the water quality for the adjacent wells one way or the other. I understand that there's a liner, so again, that won't affect the wells one way or the other. So, really what it comes down to for me is the environmental side. And as your representative on the Indian River Lagoon Council, I can tell you, everybody that I spoke to, that any scientists that I spoke to and people that are on the board, they're all in unanimous agreement that this would be a good swap. And because largely, it's a better habitat, and it's a higher ground, and it's already a better habitat, nothing has to be done or expended to make it better. So, for that reason, I've been swayed to support this land swap.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rizardi?
Yeah, and I probably should have mentioned this at the beginning of my argument, but, I mean, they did, you talked about, Commissioner Tobias talked about the engineering monies that will be lost. I mean, why were they doing engineering on this property without the approval of a commission? I know they did for the planning, but monies expended for anything that they have done to this point was a risk that that state agency took without final approval from us. You know, I don't know that we can say that, you know, that's any of our fault.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I'd pump this to Ms. Bentley. Did we have a contract with FINE dating back to, you can probably help me, '96 or '99, stating that we would pay for a portion of the engineering involved?
There was a hearing where it was discussed in 2009, and then a contract in 2015, and then that contract expired before they were able to complete all the permitting.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. May I ask Ms. Rosenka a question?
Please. Ms. Rosenka, would you mind?
I got to tell you, this just kind of caught my accounting ears when you said it. Can you tell me the value of the property that the county owns right now?
I used it, I extrapolated from the piece of property that was there based upon the property appraisal market value. The 84 acres the county owns is worth 585,000. It's a $6,900 an acre value, and if you multiply that out, I think it was 481,000.
Can you give me the value of the property that we were looking to possibly swap?
83,000.
See, that's where I just kind of like cringe on, so.
And that's based upon what I could find in the public record because no one has done an appraisal, which I believe EAL should have done, so you would have the information before you to know what you're getting.
I'm struggling with that, and the properties are close. I've got to believe both these properties have a lot of like environmental wonderful things, and I am a little concerned that maybe we didn't buy other property to begin with, with EAL's fund too. Commissioner Tobias, you said we were allowed to go ahead and be comfortable with this, otherwise.
Never meet you comfortable.
Yeah, so I'm going to split us up right now because I'm probably going to vote against it because I do think it's a great piece of property. I wouldn't mind picking it up for 83,000 right now, not doing anything on it, but I just, from listening to the homeowners, and it is going to bring some effect to them, and so I'm probably not going to vote in favor of the swap today.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would like to just add, based on Commissioner Pritchett's comments, the properties are side by side, so the dredge material, I can't see where it's going to make much difference to the homeowners one way or the other. And as far as the value is concerned, there's no money being changed hands, we're never going to sell it. So, it's not like we're losing money or gaining money, it's just a land swap. So, I appreciate your thoughts, but I just wanted to interject that. Not that I'm trying to change your mind, but.
Yeah, but it's almost like swapping a Bentley for a Toyota. So, I'm sorry in my head, that's just where it kind of leans a little bit, so.
Well, and that's a good analogy, except that if the Bentley and Toyota were sitting in your garage never to be driven, it really doesn't make any difference.
And also, the question is, is it a totaled Bentley and a '98 Toyota Supra, 320 horsepower twin-turbo V6? I might take the Toyota in that case. Plus, it's going to be more reliable. All right, so there are no more lights. I've intentionally been quiet up here to try to see where other folks are at. It's two to two, so it seems at this point. Anyone have a coin? No, I'm not going to flip a coin on this. So, there are a few things that come to mind with respect to this. First, my general rule has been if there is a project that exclusively or disproportionately impacts one particular commission district, I'll do whatever that commissioner wants, especially if I'm vacillating between which answer is the right answer. Looking at this issue, and we've had it come up in D2 in Merritt Island, north of the Walmart, no one wants something like this next to their property, no one wants something like this anywhere near their property. This is one of those not in my backyard type of deals. It's got to go somewhere. That said, I appreciate the concerns. With something like this, I really, I have to look at what the commissioner in whose district the project is proposed thinks. I also have to look at what staff proposes. We haven't really heard from staff what their thoughts are in terms of the potential real impact. I can tell you, I did the research on the same topic when it applied to District 2, north of Walmart. From what I understand, I can tell you, there's certain complaints that probably are overblown, there's certain complaints that may not be overblown. I think that the smell complaint, from what I recall from our discussion probably a year ago on the other item that applied to my district, was that where we have existing sites of this nature, we've never had a complaint from anyone that lives in that area contiguous to it on account of odors. We have had folks that have been upset, to my understanding, based on the noise. So, I would like to hear from staff in terms of what they perceive the impact on those folks to be.
Good morning, Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. I wanted to take just a moment just to address a couple of issues that have been discussed. EAL did not buy this program, this land. It was part of a mitigation deal. I don't know if that makes any difference, but I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. It's far less expensive to manage new lands than it is to restore the property that we are talking about. I've been in conversation with Mike Knight, the EAL program manager, and we're thinking that to manage this parcel, should you decide to approve this exchange, would probably be less than $10,000 a year. And if you put that against the cost of having to take the parts we currently own and rehab that into scrub j mitigation, there's really no comparison.
So, from a county perspective, you think it would be, and I'm sorry to put you in any sort of position where I'm asking you a policy question, and that's probably the least favorite place for you to be, but I really am still very much on the fence on this, and I'm trying to put myself in one boat or the other. From the county's perspective, do you see any downsides to approving it?
I have been looking at it from the perspective of the scrub jays, and the land swap as it's proposed, obviously, we will do whatever the board tells us to do, but I've listened to the experts, I've also listened to the scientists, and having listened to FINE, that basin will be there either on either piece of property.
Yeah, if you have a question for Mary Ellen, please.
Mary Ellen, so if we keep the piece of property we have now, you didn't kind of give me an idea of a dollar amount.
I'd have to probably ask Mike Knight.
And I'll give you guys a moment to talk, because we've got a couple of your lights, we'll circle back to this. Commissioner Tobias?
I don't know where you are, but please don't.
I don't know where I am.
Yeah, just to be clear, I will support you either way you go on this one. Ms. Rosenka certainly has made some valid points on this one, and please take my vote out of the, or my position out on this as any determining, determination on how you go one way or another on this one.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Rizardi?
And while I appreciate staff's input, remember, we're the policymakers, and I'm not saying we're better or smarter or, you know, we have a better background, but that's why we're elected to make those hard decisions. To me, it goes back to numbers. You know, you have a property that's worth over half a million dollars, and in exchange, we're getting a property worth approximately 83,000. Will we ever have that back in our hands? Possibly not, but, you know, the state agency is not our county government.
Mary Ellen?
So, Mike Knight, Endangered Lands Program. So, regarding the cost of management for the lands we have, we would have the ability to reach into grant monies through the Nature Conservancy Fund to be able to help manage those lands. I couldn't give you an exact number of what it would cost us to do that. We think generally, the lands that if we did the exchange, we would probably be looking at less than $10,000 a year to manage those lands. If we had to restore the lands that we have now, we could easily be spending 75 to $100,000 to get those lands initially restored, and then we would have that similar annual cost. One other thing I'd just like to add on the value of the land, it's, I don't know which numbers Ms. Rosenka is using, but the land that we have now has many more wetlands on it, so it's very unlikely that it is a more expensive piece of property than the FINE land, which is primarily all uplands.
Commissioner Rizardi?
Do we have a, you know, I know you make that statement that there's wetlands, so the value's a lot lower. I mean, I can only go off of what our property appraiser has on their site. Do we have an appraisal for that property?
No, we don't.
Have we ever had an appraisal on that property?
No.
Yeah, that to me, that's, and as far as restoring the lands we have now, was that in our plan, or were we just assuming this land swap was going to happen, so it was never as part of the EAL's plan?
Yeah, so it, the property was acquired in '95, I believe.
And we've not invested any money in that property?
No, because it's always been in negotiations as a potential exchange.
Okay, so restoring that land would more be an EAL's obligation as an environmentally endangered lands, what that mission of that organization is to do, that's something we probably should be doing had that land not been set for exchange, correct?
Agreed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a new one? Okay, all right, understood. Yeah, I think, again, this is probably my least favorite vote that's come up for a while. I think I've got to go back, despite what Commissioner Tobias mentioned about not being overly concerned about his position, I've really got to look at that and factor that in. The fact is, I do feel bad for the folks that live there, I really do. I wouldn't want it next to me, I'll admit that, I'm not going to lie to you and tell you otherwise. It's got to go somewhere. If the commissioner in whose district the project is proposed is satisfied it's the right thing, my biggest negative evaporates to a degree. The positive, I think, for the lagoon, the positive on the environmental side, the positive on the scrub j side, I don't see an environmental negative to doing this, I really don't. I'm not happy supporting it, I really am not, but I think I have an obligation to do that. I don't see, from my constituents' perspectives, and I feel that my biggest duty is to the folks that live in D2. I think the folks that live in D2 are best served by my voting for this, even if I'm not thrilled with it. So, I respect where folks are at, quite frankly. This is probably the tightest vote, or the closest vote I've had to having the opposite opinion at the end of the day, but I've got to, you know, I've got to make a decision one way or the other, and I think it's slightly more compelling to go the way that I'm suggesting. And I apologize that I can't give it an overwhelming endorsement, but I think there are negatives and there are positives with this, and this is one of those no wins. So, with that, I'll go ahead and call the question with respect to this item. We've had a motion? We've not had a motion, may I have a motion?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Approve the. Sure, Mr. Chair. Approve the exchange agreement authorized chair to execute upon CAO and risk management approval, authorize staff to file this agreement, and authorize county manager to execute the necessary BCR.
I appreciate it. Commissioner Tabia, I'll go ahead and I'll second your motion. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right. Passes three to two with Commissioners Nardi and Pritchett in the negative. Thank you all. That was probably one of the most profoundly uncomfortable votes we've had in a long time, certainly for me.
Okay.
Them's not nice words.
Yeah, we've heard worse.
Yeah, we have heard worse, though. I've been told quite a bit worse. Let's see here.
Like a senate commissioner, somebody who's totally unhappy.
Yes, sir. And, you know, you're spot on with that. There have been a few of these where frankly, it doesn't matter which way you go, you're going to upset quite a few folks. All right, we'll go ahead and we'll circle back to I as in Echo 2. I see our Director of Republic of China, the TECO office in Miami, David Chen, and also the Deputy Director, Sarah Chen. If you all want to come up, you're certainly welcome to. But I'll go ahead and I'll read the resolution, and then I'll ask for a motion, which I will second, and we'll go from there. So whereas the Republic of China observes the 109th National Day on October 10, 2020, and whereas since the establishment of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami in 1988, and the consequent establishment of the sister state and sister city relations between the state and cities of Florida and Taiwan, the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami has spared no efforts in the upholding of bilateral economic, cultural, and educational relations. And whereas the United States and Taiwan have maintained and enhanced close friendship over the decades encompassing commercial, cultural, and other interactions based on the 1979 Taiwan Relations Act, Public Law 96 hyphen eight, 96 Congress, the cornerstone of the U.S.-Taiwan ties, which celebrates the 41st anniversary of its enactment in 2020. And whereas Taiwan has been a member of the United States Visa Waiver Program since November 1 of 2012, reflecting the ever closer cooperation between the United States and Taiwan, and making travel for business and tourism between the two more convenient. And whereas Dr. Sei Ying Wen, the first female president of the Republic of China and democratically reelected in 2020, was warmly welcomed to Miami on June 24, 2016, further enhancing the bilateral relationship between Florida and Taiwan, as well as strengthening the common values it shares with the United States. And whereas the launch of Formisat 7 Cosmic 2 on June 25, 2019, a joint U.S.-Taiwan collaborative space program of a constellation of six satellites designed to enhance the accuracy of atmospheric weather prediction, has demonstrated the mutual benefit born of U.S.-Taiwan relations. And whereas Taiwan is the ninth largest trading partner of the United States and the 10th largest export market in the world for U.S. goods as of June of 2020, as well as Florida's sixth largest market in Asia, garnering the Sunshine State over 7,850 jobs and $944.3 million in trade and investment ties in 2018. And whereas the establishment of a bilateral trade agreement between the United States and Taiwan in order to strengthen further bilateral trade and economic ties is welcome. And whereas Taiwan's bid for meaningful participation in numerous international organizations, including the International Civil Aviation Organization, the World Health Organization, the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, and the International Criminal Police Organization would benefit regional development, peace, and prosperity. And whereas Taiwan is a close strategic partner to the United States in East Asia, with dynamic progress toward political democratization and economic liberalization, as well as the promotion of education, humanitarian aid, healthcare, environmental protections, technological innovation, and the advancement of basic human rights of life, liberty, and security. And whereas to assist in the fight against the COVID-19 pandemic, the government and people of Taiwan has donated over 11.75 million medical masks to the United States through federal and local governments, including ours, as of mid-2020, of which over 420,000 medical masks were donated in Florida and Brevard County. And whereas Taiwan aspires to further contribute to the international development and to promote peace and prosperity, we cherish our traditional cordial sister state and sister city relations with Taiwan, and hope to further solidify them. And we recognize Taiwan's efforts in its aim to participate effectively and meaningfully in global affairs, and will continue to support her mission of economic liberalization, political democratization, and significant participation in the international arena. Therefore, now it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim its recognition on this auspicious occasion of the 109th National Day of the Republic of China and her achievements with admiration and gratitude. May I have a motion to adopt? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Smith, which I'll happily second. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, happily, it passes unanimously. Welcome, please.
Yeah.
It's excellent to see you again, sir. And thank you again for the mask that you donated to the county.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, yeah, I'm David Chen from Taipei Economic and Cultural Office, the Director General of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office, which represent the interest of the Republic of China, Taiwan. Yeah, it's very, it's my great pleasure to be here to accept this honor. This resolution is not only for, an honor not only for myself, but also for my government and my people. And Florida is Taiwan's sixth state. Taiwan is Florida's very important export market in Asia. And there are tens of thousands of Taiwanese living here and calling Florida home, and we maintain a very close and robust relations, and we have a long lasting friendship. And since this March, when the pandemic broke out, we know that Florida got the severe hit by the pandemic, and virus knows no boundary, virus knows no borders. We have to work together to collaborate with each other to curb the virus spray. Therefore, on behalf of the government of the Republic of China, Taiwan, we donated 5,000 face masks to Brevard Counties this June. And we hope that this donation of masks will help the first responder in Brevard County to curb the spread of the virus and the comeback to the pandemic. And we sincerely hope that the pandemic will subside, and our daily life will go back to normal as soon as possible. And the most importantly, we look forward to working with you to further enhance the bilateral relations between Taiwan and the Brevard County. I wish you good health and safety. Thank you very much.
I could not have said it better myself, sir. So we've got a frame resolution for you. If you just hang out for a moment, we'll go ahead and get a photo?
Okay, please.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, we have two of them. We have the one from earlier for the face mask donation. So I'll go ahead. Actually, I'll give one of each.
Okay.
So let's see here. Looks like we've gotten through all of the public hearings in Item Hs in Hotel. Unfinished business. We'll start with I as in India 1 on the resort dwellings. Oh, five-minute break? Okay. Commissioner Nardi, if you'd like a five-minute break, okay, we'll go ahead and we'll recess. I apologize. Oh, I don't know which commissioner it was, but we'll go ahead and recess. We'll reconvene sharply at 11:20. At 11:20. All right, Commissioner Pritchett, just to help the folks out on a quick item here, J is in Juliet 1. Would you mind that we address that first?
No, and I'm ready to make a motion on it.
Would you like to move to approve it?
I would, but I want to add one condition on it.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the approval subject to conditions of the site plan that the application's bringing in. But any future development, redevelopment, or land alteration of the property that modifies or reduces natural vegetative buffer will void the wall barrier. So if anything different goes on.
And the only card we have on this is Kevin Gibson, the applicant. So as long as you give me an unmistakable, unambiguous thumbs up with what Commissioner Pritchett said, I'll go ahead and mention it. We'll have it in the record. All right, I'm seeing a literal thumbs up from the applicant, so I think that'll suffice. I'll go ahead and second your motion to approve with the condition that you mentioned, Item J is in Juliet 1. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, J 1 passes. Thank you for your patience, sir. Okay, we will circle back here to I 1. We do have one card on that. Let's go ahead and address that. It is Patricia Fitzgerald from Melbourne Beach. Thank you for your patience, ma'am. I'm sorry, meeting's running a little long, but I promise I'll give you your full time.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. My name is Patricia Fitzgerald. I lived in the same house in unincorporated Melbourne Beach for 22 years. After experiencing hardship with my divorce, I'm in need for supplemental income and to make ends meet. I'm a full-time working single mom and have a full-time student at home and one in graduate school. I have a mother-in-law suite in the back of my property, and I would like to have that to be an Airbnb business for short-term rentals. It is small, with only one or two people only, and I am requesting permission to have this Airbnb as soon as I can, since it's been a struggle lately for me. I pay all my bills on time. I'm paying myself out of debt. I just refinanced, changed my homeowners to save money, but this would really help me make ends meet. I understand, according to the current zoning laws, my zone in unincorporated Melbourne Beach is not permitted. And that on the 211 agenda report, it is listed as trying to be permitted in this agenda report from your office, and my zone is in that area. And I'm here to, you know, please ask that police pass this so that I'm able to have this short-term rental on my property. And I don't know how long, because this has been going on for quite a while. I just kind of got into it for the last couple of months. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask for a variance for this specific thing, or an exception. So I come before all of you to make my plea.
Right, and certainly we can get you set up with staff to discuss any sort of questions as far as exceptions to policy or things of that nature.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, don't everyone jump in at once on this one?
Miss, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you. And since this was my agenda item, this was brought up months ago, and Commissioner Smith mentioned, let's wait till session, even though he was very, very prophetic when he said they probably wouldn't get anything done. He was 100% correct. I'm not going to get into too much detail, because this is just permission to advertise. But as it stands now, staff gets a call every day. And these are not easily answerable questions. It's not plug your address in and find out whether you're eligible to do this or not. Many times, these phone calls result in valuable time, not only in that department, but also with the county attorney's office. And I think the, I think in the agenda report, they said it best, quote, "Code language remains convoluted." So I'm trying to fix it, and this certainly would be a good start to help individuals, such as the one that just spoke. To be very clear, this would not affect HOA or any municipal regulations. They are always permitted to be more restrictive. As we discussed way back in February, short-term rentals are an economic driver, which I can get into a little bit more, but there's nothing, there's no better ant example of that than the speaker that we just had. So here's all I'm asking. It's very simple. It's not radical. As such, based on the staff analysis, the proper way to move forward would be to As such, based on the staff analysis, the proper way to move forward would be to adopt the state definition of a vacation rental in our code as permitted use in the listed zoning categories. We're trying nothing radical, other than using the state definition. This would prevent any issues with preemption, while ensuring we maximize the economic opportunities of our citizens. So again, I can get into more detail, but all this would do, I'll make a motion at the end, but again, this is just permission to advertise, so I certainly would hope that I get some support to continue to look at this.
I'll treat that as a motion, and I'll go ahead and second it. Just a question from Ms. Bentley, and I'm certainly inclined to support this, assuming the answer's the affirmative. Just to confirm, COAs, HOAs, things of that nature, municipalities, this will do nothing to preclude them from enacting more stringent regulations. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm happy with it, then.
Mr. Chair, direct staff to develop, can I read the poll?
Yeah, if you'd like to read it.
Sorry. Direct staff to develop code amendments and issue legislative intent and permission to advertise consistent with the following. One, create a new use of the definition vacation rentals, as recommended by the county attorney's office, and include this as a permitted use, which we cannot add any conditions on per state statute enlisting zone categories and amend existing zoning classifications to prevent any conflict between short-term rentals and vacation rentals. That is the full motion.
Yeah, and that's my second, too.
Thanks.
All right. I don't see any discussion, so unless someone would like to chime in, I'll go ahead and call the question. All right, all in favor of supporting that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes four one with Commissioner Pritchett and a negative. All right, we'll move on to item I's in India two. We do have one public comment card. We'll go ahead and address that. Looks like Brian Miller and Bryce O'Donoghue. I can give you separately three minutes, if you'd like, and then you can both get up.
We're here to answer questions.
Okay. Yeah, however you'd like to do it, sir.
Thank you. Just want to thank you all for, you know, meeting with us over the past few months, discussing this. We had some conversations with staff about two weeks ago. We think we've got all of the things resolved. There's one issue that we would like to have the board discuss, which is the length of the term of the contract. In the RFP, it was listed as three years. We entered into that, we responded with the knowledge of that, but we are asking for that to be extended to about seven years, and that reason is with the cost involved on our end, to amortize that out over time is just much easier and doable for us if it was extended. There is a termination clause in there regardless, for convenience, so the county is covered. The county would be getting the minimum amount, whatever it is that is determined, over the course of several years, and can therefore expect that revenue for several years. So we're really asking for the length of the term to be extended out. Seven years would be preferred. So that's really what we've just come here to talk about today.
So a question, because I know the clerks are wondering, are you or Brian or Bryce?
I'm Brian, Bruce.
Bruce, I'm sorry.
That's my handwriting, bro.
That's your handwriting? You should be a physician.
Lefty.
Lefty physician, then. All right, Commissioner Tobias, then Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks in particular to staff, not only for the first time around, but the second time around. Mr. Darling, I know you went through great sacrifice even to make that meeting, and we'll leave it there. So I go back to the RFP, and the RFP did not, oh, sorry, did not exclude District Two. Mr. Chair, are you still interested in being excluded from this?
I still definitely am. I can tell you that...
I'm...
Okay, fair enough. I'll leave it at that for a sufficient...
That's your prerogative. I will ask for a little leeway from you. That, to my understanding, is 15 boxes. When the RFP went out, it was based on them receiving a total of 62 boxes. Now, I imagine their argument would be the boxes in your district have greater visibility and are in a better location, certainly for not only residents, but tourists as well. I'm not willing to make that concession, but I certainly believe that, based on the RFP, the parameters have changed. I would be supportive of doing that at a prorated basis. So when you take out the boxes in District Two, which again, was not in the initial RFP, prorated, that drops the $50,000 down about a little over $12,000 to $37,900. So I would support either the $37,900 minus yours, or should you change your mind and want those, allow those 15 boxes per the RFP than the $50,000? But I think it would not be fair to charge the full freight and exclude boxes.
Understood. I believe we had, we have some new lights here. Commissioner Pritchett, then Smith, then Aznavi.
Yes, we got a call from your office. You were fine with the $50,000 excluding District Two yesterday.
Even better.
That wasn't what I actually called to talk about.
I got a call from someone, Brian Miller.
Yes.
They were good with it, but you wanted to change the term length to seven years.
Yeah, that was really what I called about yesterday. I didn't want to get into those details, but Commissioners Tobias is correct.
Well, I'm going to support the $50,000, and I'm uncomfortable with a complete seven year, just in case we have a problem, but what I would be willing to do is three-year with two-year additional years after we get through the three. So I don't see that would be a problem, unless we just have a total problem altogether. But a seven-year thing into something brand-new, we've never done before, I'm more comfortable with the three, and then a two and a two, which will give you the seven years. So that's what I'm going to support, is the $50,000 plus a three-one, and then a two and a two additional ones afterwards.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm not so sure that I would support three, two, and two, only because there is a clause that allows us, an escape clause, for want of a better word. Is there not in this contract?
Yes, there is. There would be. We haven't determined the exact timeframe for that. What was listed in the discussions was, I believe, 90 days, and we're seeking 12 months on that, just so we can make plans. There will be locations under contract. We'd have to make plans to terminate those leases with the buyers.
And I'm looking at the cost from the business perspective, the cost and the risk that you're taking, and if you feel seven years is the right number, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
We do. There's a sizable investment in coming to Brevard County in terms of the infrastructure itself, as well as other business costs. Again, there is that termination clause that will remain there for the county for protection, and so that's why we are seeking the longer term.
So if we got the year four or five, and we, whoever the commissioners might be at that time, decide that this isn't something that they want to continue, they have an out.
Correct.
So that's why I won't support the two and two. I understand where you're coming from, but I think we need to protect the value of the business that's making the risk, taking the risk.
They still would be allowed to continue the contract, unless there's a breach of contract somewhere, correct? With a two-year extension and a two-year extension, they would have sole opportunity to renew it, correct? I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm the chair.
Not sole, ma'am. It would be at the end of the initial term. We would reach out to them, make sure the department and the contractor are both still agreeable to renewing the terms listed in the contract.
Well, my point is that for them to take the initial risk, they feel comfortable, they only feel comfortable if they do the seven years. I understand what you're saying, but again, we have the out clause, so that really is kind of the same thing of what you're asking for. So they have the out clause, I mean, the county has the out clause. Mr. Loeb, I would like to know why you want to exempt, because there may be a reason that you have that would cause me not to support this.
Sure. And the short of it, I may have discussed this at the prior meeting when this came up, but I'll give you the Cliff's Notes version. I don't like the idea twofold. One, I don't want to compete with private industry that may have billboards or signage opportunities in adjacent properties with our government property. And the other thing that's a bigger issue perhaps for me is, folks are already distracted enough. I understand now that there is a law in place that prohibits folks from using their cellphones or electronic devices while they're driving. I still see people doing that. I see people shaving in the car on occasion. I just don't want to do anything that's going to add distraction to them unless there is some profound benefit for either the public or the area. And I just, I don't see the amounts of money that we're talking about being sufficient to overcome the concerns that I have. You know, if they said it's $3 million, I would say, well, you know, it's more than enough to offset a potential fender bender here and there, but I just, I have concerns about it. So, you know, my thought on it, just very briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioners Nardi, is I'm vacillating between whether to support it in the other districts, or whether to shoot it down altogether, from my perspective. I know it's not going to matter at the end of the day, but the folks that live in my district go to all the other districts. I go to your district a lot, between the avenues and Palm Shore Bistro and Cabana Shore is out in that area. Usually, I'm eating in your district disproportionately.
Good, we like that.
I know, it's lovely. But the fact is, other folks are like me. They're going to drive through, so it is going to impact D2 regardless of whether it applies just in the other areas or nowhere at all. But I think with this, I'm probably going to end up being a team player and supporting it if it's something that applies only in the other districts, but I really, I don't like the idea, so...
Well, I appreciate that, and I understand. For me, my perspective is, it's a beautification effort. What they're doing makes the county look a little bit better. And for me, I'm one of those people that just looks straight ahead. I don't wave at other people. I don't pay attention to what's going on. If I'm at a red light, then I might pay attention to one of these boxes, but...
If they were all like you...
Now, let me ask you a question. Can we, Ms. Bentley, can we put something in the contract that if Mr. Loeb chooses not to run again, and the next commissioner decides that he or she would like to add that, this company to their district, can that be done? Or does it even matter if we include the language?
We can always renegotiate, couldn't we not?
We could renegotiate. We might be able to put in an alternate, but let me look at that. Contract isn't written. Perhaps I can come up with some language along those lines.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
May I comment?
Briefly, please.
It was our understanding that the language would say something, the lines of, "We may have access to unless prohibited by staff," something along those lines, so that we wouldn't have to come back here for a revote or anything.
Yeah, and there's another, I believe the terms of the contract would be, it's a minimum of the $50,000 or 20%, whichever is greater. So if we add more boxes, then that obviously would be additional revenue if that happened at a future date.
Commissioners Nardi?
Or we could make it simple and just include District Two. I mean, I don't want to step on Commissioner Loeb's toes, but we do have that ability as well. I agree with Commissioner Tobias. Big shocker, right? If earlier. I mean, I don't think they should be paying for something they didn't bid on. I'm okay with that. As far as the investment goes, I think those boxes are really neat, because I've seen some of the public service announcements. So there's not just the untapped revenue benefit, there's also the opportunity to give for messaging. So I think that's wonderful. Yes?
I just wanted to indicate that...
Mr. Bate?
And I want to ask Stephen to confirm. When we went back after the last board meeting and negotiated, we specifically negotiated with the understanding, so when we asked for the $50,000, it was with the understanding that that $50,000 was without District Two participating. And I'd just ask Stephen to confirm that, if he would.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Tobias?
That may be true, but the motion did not contemplate, the motion made to staff to get $50,000 did not have your district excluded from it, to be very clear.
Well, whatever motions put up today, obviously we'll address...
The problem is with Mr. Darling, he's doing his job too well, and you need to cut it out.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I wasn't done. Yeah, again, this is brand-new. I'm not sure if I like it seven-year enough yet. I would like to try it for three. So I'm not going to support a seven-year solid contract. I would a three with extensions, because we could really like it by then. As far as $50,000 or 20%, whatever, I'm guessing you're going to make more than that anyway, so I'm going to stick with the 50, because we had that full discussion. He said he didn't want in it. It's what we came back, throwing it out to your company. So I would vote yes on $50,000 or 20% of advertising sales, which is greater, three years with two, two-year renewables. I'd be comfortable with that, but I'm just not comfortable jumping into a seven-year right now, and we're not real sure of the product, so...
I'm on board with Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Tobias?
I heard Commissioner Smith's, I was trying to split the middle here, but I heard Commissioner Smith, and he is a businessman up here, so I appreciate that. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners Nardi, where, I heard where you, on the financial aspect, where are you on the term of the contract?
I'm okay with lengthening the term. Maybe the compromise is the full $50,000, and then we lengthen the entire term of the contract. Or somewhere in the middle, we go with the 37. And I asked these guys when I spoke with them, what about, same question you had Commissioner Smith about District Two opting in, because it may be something that they decide to opt in in two years. Commissioner Loeb may change his mind in a year. We just don't know. And I think that that probably can be figured in the contract. But, you know, I also asked what the potential income was at, you know, 20% of sales, and potential income could be $100,000 a year for the county. So I think the more districts that are, you know, the more boxes we have, the better. So that's probably a different argument. But I'm okay with lengthening the terms, but maybe that gets, you know, somebody else in a better place if we say, you know, we ask for the full amount. But I think more than three years is more than acceptable, to expect someone to make that kind of investment, because they have to supply their own power and everything.
Okay. We'll pay for their own power. They're taking our power, but they're paying for it. So here's, I've been jotting down where we are over this, Mr. Chair. It seems the compromises are somewhere in between the 38 and the 50, which somewhere is around 44, and it's hard to find a middle between like a 3-2-2 and a 7 altogether. I guess that would be a 5-2. So the compromises I have here, and I would support either one, I'm just trying to see where you guys would be, would be a 44 minimum in a 5-2 contract, or the full $50,000 in a seven-year contract. And again, I would vote for either one. It sounds like Commissioner Loeb would vote for neither of them. It sounds like Commissioner Pritchett would vote for neither of them. So I'm just trying to count to three up here, one way or another.
I've got a question. I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm not going to do the, well, we're supposed to have five Republicans up here, kind of nonsense. But I do want to understand, because I'd like to think that you have some degree of pride in being fiscally conservative. With respect to compromise, why are we compromising at all if we're bidding against ourselves, let's call it that, but if they were amenable to doing three years, $50,000 excluding D2, why not just do that? I mean, why are we changing the terms to make them more favorable after they've already been negotiated?
Because they asked for seven, because of the expense and the risk.
But if they're still amenable to doing three, as I understood, they're not amenable to doing three?
No, sir. They were not amenable to doing three in the negotiations. That's why staff is asking for more direction, specifically on the term. Everything else was a break too.
And Mr. Chair, yeah, and when we put trial lawyers on buses, I think we've hit the bottom. So I think there's only one way to go.
I agree with you on that.
But you know, with the compromise, we were offering three years, then to one year. So the compromises, we did three-year plus two, two-years, which gets them up to their seven either way, so I did do a compromise there.
I'm still good with that, Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Pritchett, you're up, and then we've got Commissioners Nardi. That was it? All right, you blasted it. Commissioners Nardi?
I'm okay with either one of those proposals, the 44, 5-2, or the 57-year.
Okay, let's go with the 44 and the 5-2. 44, I don't think hurts the county at all, because we're getting 44 or 20%.
Minimum, yeah.
Right. And so I trust that these guys are going to do a bang-up job, and people are going to be appreciative and rush to give them business, and I think that we're going to see them do very, very well with this.
Mr. Chair, can we ask you?
Hang on a second. Commissioners Nardi has the floor at the moment?
I was just going to say, is that acceptable to you, being the vendor?
Can you clarify for that one more time?
It'd be a five-year contract with a two-year renewal and $44,000 a year.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Or 20%, whichever is higher.
Yeah, obviously. And we could get right in the terms somehow, if the other district opts in with the additional boxes.
And we, I mean, we could also renegotiate that at some point as well, if that, if it turns to be some smashing success, and you're pulling in millions and millions of dollars, which hopefully will be the case.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Just to note, they would have taken the $50,000 and a 3-2 and 2, so we just kind of negotiated ourselves down to a different position.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Loeb did have a point there, but, you know, either way, you guys have got, you know, got the votes here. Some will be quiet, but I just had to blurt that out, so...
Well, I like to think that we're in partnership with a business person. Well, I like to think that we're in partnership with a business person, and they're here to benefit themselves and benefit us. And we're getting that 20%. So it's going to be more than $50,000 anyway.
I hope so. Commissioner Zarny?
Yeah, they just said they wouldn't, and we can confirm that they weren't amenable to the 50 with 3-2-2, right? Or 3-1 and 1, but.
They were not in negotiations agreeable to the three-year initial term with two single-year renewals at $50,000 minimum. That's, that's.
All right. I just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Tavaia?
Mr. Darling, how, how many other respondents were there to the RFP?
They were the only respondent.
So if, if they're not, and we're not really negotiating.
You've got your three votes. So do you want to make a motion, Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Direct staff to formalize a proposal with a 5-2 contract, a minimum of $44,000, with a higher amount of being 20% advertising sales. Mr. Chair.
For clarification, just so there's absolutely no ambiguity down the road, when you say 5-2 with respect to the, the 2, renewable upon consent of both parties?
Correct. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Zarny. Got to give it to her. Sorry, Commissioner Smith.
Let's just, I was going to say, do we have to, did you say excluding District 2?
No. I, I didn't mean to pull one over excluding, excluding the 15 boxes that are in District 2.
Okay, so excluding.
I'll admit my second.
And the second stands from Commissioner Zarny. Seeing no further discussion, I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Nay. Okay, passes 3-2 with myself and Commissioner Pritchett in the negative. God, these votes are all over the board today.
Sir.
Yes.
Chair. If I could get clarification real quick. The third bullet under the requested action was to authorize the county manager, designee to sign all contract-related documents.
May I have a motion, Commissioner Pritchett? I'll go ahead and second that motion. All in favor of taking the actions dated by Mr. Darling, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right. So that takes care of ayes in India. We already did J1, so we'll go to J2. Ms. Bentley, I know that we spoke earlier, but obviously this wasn't incorporated into the, the actual item here. I provided Ms. Bentley a couple names, Brian Kirwin, K-I-R-W-I-N, with Kirwin Norris in Church Street in Orlando, 407-740-6600, and also Guy Haggard with Gray Robinson in Orlando, 407-843-8880, who may have a conflict though, so he may be out. I just asked Ms. Bentley if she would be amenable to having a little more authority than she asked for, so that should she choose to go with either the firm listed in the agenda item, or Mr. Kirwin, or Mr. Haggard, that she would have the ability to do that. So I would ask that we, we have a motion to approve this item, but authorize Ms. Bentley to execute whatever documents are necessary in retaining either the attorney identified in that firm, or Kirwin Norris, or Gray Robinson, at a rate not to exceed 300 an hour. That way, he doesn't have to come back to the board again. So may I have a motion?
Some of them.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Smith. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. So now we are on to J3. I don't know where other folks are. I didn't like it when I saw it, but after speaking with staff, I do like it. So if folks want to discuss it, I'm happy to discuss it. Otherwise, we can just take a motion and get it going.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, motion to Commissioner Smith, and a second to Commissioner Pritchett? All right, second to Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor of approving item J is in Julie at three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, public comments, we've already done. Board reports, Mr. Bate.
I have no report.
Good man. Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Excellent. Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Perfect. I have no report for L4. Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three things, and I'll be brief.
Yes, sir.
This board, at, at the budget workshop, voted unanimously to include the 2.38 COLA in its fiscal year 2021 budget. Took this to mean that this will be implemented at the start of the fiscal year and not withheld, and I believe the rest of the board did as well, listening to the discussion on video. As such, I have a simple motion to make it clear that the COLA is to be effective October 1st. So I'm not changing anything. I, I, the, the motion is the motion to implement the 2.38 cost of living adjustment for county employees effective the first pay period of fiscal year 2020, 2021. Commissioner Pritchett?
I disagree with that. When we made that motion, the amount that the county manager had, the 2%, he was going to come back and let us know if, if we were able to do it. That, that raise will be effective when he comes back and we're able to determine we have the funds. But that will be the raise that'll be implemented at the time. There's a 2% held in his notes. We moved it up to 2.38% because the 2.38% was a $750,000 increase in the budget. Along with the two, it's a $2.1 million. So I think we're going to have to have that data come back at that time, as far as when funds settle down.
Okay, I don't think it's.
I think probably about November, December-ish.
Okay, I don't think it's going to be unanimous then. So the motion still stands.
And I'll just throw out there as well, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Pritchett on this one. I think we have a couple we're in alignment with today, so my understanding's the same.
I'll second.
Commissioner Zarny? All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we all understand what we're voting on? Perfect. All in favor of Commissioner Tavaia's motion as seconded by Commissioner Zarny, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. Commissioner Smith, where you at, sir?
Nay.
Nay, perfect. All right, motion fails with Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Pritchett, myself in the negative, and Commissioner Tavaia, and Commissioner Zarny in the affirmative.
Wow. Okay. On a positive note, one of my employees, Katie, is turning 20 years old today. On your birthday, I'd like to say you will not be getting a 2.38% raise. And finally, this would go out to the fake news of the Florida today. I'd like to tell you thank you so much for your wonderful reporting today that, that talked, after 22 and a half weeks, the world of beer will be opening in Viera. So thank you so much for putting that as the byline. It caught my attention, and we'll continue with that subscription. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I have several things. I'll be brief.
Please, sir.
The first, I have a slide that we're supposed to have put up here.
Logan?
Okay. This is for CFX. As your representative, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what, where we are with that. We have 779 days of cash on hand. We have a reserve balance of $172 million, and we have cash construction, cash construction on hand of, whatever that number is, 421 million. So I've said this before, we're, we're a very healthy operation dollar-wise. We did some projections because the, the traffic in central Florida was way down when, when COVID started. So we had an auditor come in and give us projections. Last month, August, our tolls were $34 million for the one month, which represents 15% down from year over year, but it was actually 50% higher than the projections that we got from our auditor in May. So we did much, much better with that. And the other thing that I wanted to do, the UniPass, that's up there. We now have a UniPass. If you use a pass, you can get a UniPass, which is good in 18 states, which is basically the entire East Coast and going west over to Illinois. So, and of course, you can use your UniPass. You could use that at the Orlando Airport if you're parking. You can use it for that as well. So we're trying to make, make traveling in central Florida much more easy for us. And as far as the tolls, it makes it easy too, because you can go from here to Maine and basically not have to reach into your pocket for cash. Okay, moving on to CARES funding. I would like to, with the permission of my fellow commissioners, request that staff look into some CARES funding for the zoo. They shut down in the most profitable portion of the year. Their attendance is down about 50%. And currently, they're about $400,000 short for the year, and they expect over the next, next several months to be down an additional $400,000. So I would like my fellow commissioners to support me in asking staff to look at some CARES funding for them.
Commissioner Pritchett, is that a new lighter or an old one? New one? Yes, ma'am.
Probably on that, we should work for a workshop pretty soon for CARES, so we can have some discussions on where you're at and where we need to land, because we've only got a few months left to give that money out. I just want to make the statement, since we've been on this commission, we have gotten almost a 10% pay raise to employees. I'm very much in favor of that. Right now, I don't know where we're going to land. I don't know, I think people are going to be losing their jobs, their homes, inability to pay food. If we've got money, and it, it comes down to this thing settles down economically, I'm for it. But I think it's a real slap for government agencies to be giving out pay raises right now when we got jobs, not knowing where the rest of the community's going. I could very possibly be for this here soon when we see it settle down, but I, I think it's something we have to look at. I am frustrated that we've given any entity an increase right now. I don't know how we, we had to do that with negotiations. But I do believe probably public safety is a majority here as, as a priority as we move forward. But right now, Commissioner Tavaia, I'm in favor of giving people raises, but I really need to see where we land first before we do this. And I had to say that because you threw out a pretty hard slam there at the end. And I wanted to make sure that people know, I would love for them to get more money, but if everybody in the community starts losing houses and jobs, I don't think it's right for governments to give out pay raises right now.
Commissioner Tavaia, you have a light as well, sir?
Thank you. And, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean it as a slam, but we've got some damn smart employees. And if they're watching this, they just saw us talk about $50,000 for putting up stupid art in public places. Like, that's important, but we turn around and say, you know what, you're not good enough for a raise.
It's 2.1 million right now. We just have to look at the budget right now. And you're looking at 2.38%. We've given 10% raises over the last four years.
50,000 for art is disgusting and a slap in the face to every employee out here.
Let's just speak up for each other, please. No, it's, it's okay. I'll, I'll give everyone an opportunity. I just, the crosstalk is impossible for the clerks. Sorry. No, it's, it's okay. As long as, you know, as long as they can get it down, that's my biggest concern. And they're not going to tell me that they can't because they're, they're super duper over there.
So where are we with, with my request for CARES funding for, because staff, they can't do it unless they look into it. So.
I, I have no problem with staff looking into almost anything. I, I will throw out there, I'll second, I'll second your request. It's going to be an uphill battle for me to actually approve it, though. My, my concern is that we, we be very, very judicious in who we hand it out to and how we hand it out. I can tell you that we, we essentially bent over backwards in extending the duration on the aquarium project with the, the TDT funds. I like the zoo. I would like them to try to exhaust private resources before we step in. I'm happy to have staff look at it, but it, it's going to be an uphill battle with me to get me to support it at the end of the day.
Well, and that's why I'm asking for the staff to look at it, because when they come back with whatever their thoughts are, then we can discuss it.
I, I just don't want anyone to be misled that I'm either going to or not going to support something where, where I already have a pretty firm idea in terms of where I'm likely to be.
I would think at this point, it's up in the air. We'll, we'll make those decisions after we get staff's report.
Mr. Bate, do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, we would need a motion. And basically, what I, what I'm understanding it to be is, we would then approach the zoo and ask them to show us what they believe they, their revenue losses or expenses related to COVID is, because those are the conditions that would be necessary. And we would have that vetted through Tetra Tech, and we would give that information back to the board, and then you can make whatever decision you want at that point.
Thank you, sir. So that's your motion?
Whether that's at a workshop, or, you know, we can schedule that at some future date.
Yes, that's my motion. I'll go ahead and second your motion. Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to be very clear, in no way will I support giving money to llamas and pigs and deers and cats when we're not giving it to our own employees. But out of the, out of, out of respect for the commissioner that put that forward, if that's going to be the will of the, the board, it does need that due diligence. So again, I will, under, no matter what comes back from Tetra Tech, I will not support it. However, I will support the, the motion for the zoo receiving those, that due diligence.
Fair enough. And I, I just will point out, though, if we were able to give staff the 0.38 increase out of CARES, I don't know that you'd have nearly as much opposition up here, but you're talking about different pots of money. So Commissioner Smith, I, I don't know if you have anything further, sir, on that. Okay, so that's, that's the motion. It's been seconded. It's been discussed at length. I'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, and you understand the, the motion, Mr. Bate?
Yeah, yes, I do. And I just wanted to ask, as well, let me, let you do that motion first.
Okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Yes, sir.
The other issue that's come up, because I've heard other commissioners talk about it, as well as, as a CARES workshop, and if you want that, if you give us an idea, we will then try to arrange it according to your schedules, what timeframe you'd like to see that.
Commissioner Pritchett, what's your preference?
When, when is our last date that we have to have all the CARES funds given out by?
You have to have them encumbered under the latest direction that came in. You have to have them encumbered by the end of December.
Okay, so maybe mid-November would be a good timing.
Yeah. And if you want to just get with the different commission offices and see what works with them, Mr. Bate, I'll make my schedule work, unless it's something I'm absolutely incapable of moving. So I'll, I'll work around other folks' schedules.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that.
I appreciate that. All right, Commissioner Smith?
Okay, thank you. Moving right along. You notice that I'm wearing my pink shirt?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's that time of year again, because real men wear pink. And again, this year, I'm asking people to support the American Cancer Society and their research into breast cancer. So I hope that my fellow commissioners will support me again this year, like you did last year. And, oh, yeah, I did have some interesting information. I, because I'm the chair of, Real Men Wear Pink in Brevard County, I sit on the Central Florida American Cancer Society Board. And at our last meeting, I was advised that COVID has had a disastrous effect on donations. American Cancer Society is down $200 million in, in their donations from last year. But some other interesting things, that they recommend cervical cancer screening begin at age 25. HPV vaccines begin at age nine. And here was the most interesting thing that I got out of our, our meeting, was that the research that is funded by things like Real Men Wear Pink and the American Cancer Society, they found, they've got real good, there are real good indicators that bacteria in your gut can alter our immune system so that we are unable to fight pancreatic cancer. So it'll be interesting to see where that goes over time, because that would be huge if they can come up with some way to prevent or reduce pancreatic cancer from developing in people, because, as everybody knows, by the time you have symptoms, it's all, it's probably too late. So that, that was the most interesting thing I got out of that meeting. Moving on to the Indian River Lagoon. After winter and spring of great to excellent water clarity, I guess everybody's noticed or heard that the water clarity is really bad. We've got an awful lot of algae working in the river. And the good news is that it's non-toxic, so it's not harmful to people. It's not harmful to the fish. In, in the current amounts, it's not. And, but the problem with algae is that over time, as it, as it, if it continues to grow, it consumes an awful lot of the oxygen, which then leads to the fish kills. So let's keep our fingers crossed that we, we go into a period of drought, which isn't likely this time of year, but more rain makes it worse because it washes the pollutants into the, into the Indian River. And because we haven't had any real failures in our septic, I mean, in our sewer systems, the pollution obviously then is coming from us. The pollution that's causing the algae blooms is coming from us. So grass clippings, the, the nutrients that we put in our yards in the way of fertilizers, et cetera, all of that has a deleterious effect on the Indian River Lagoon. So just be aware of that. When you wash your car, when you fertilize your lawn, et cetera, when we do those things excessively, it winds up in the lagoon, even the stormwater. When we've talked about the stuff on the sides of the roads, cleaning it up, that eventually winds up in the, in the Indian River Lagoon as by way of stormwater. So that's that. And the last thing I wanted to mention was Dedication Saturday, and I have a slide for that as well. About two and a half years ago, Colonel Tim Thomas came to me and asked about naming a road after Major General John Cleveland. We don't have that slide.
Logan, do we, sir?
No, I'm sorry, we don't have that slide.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Anyway, this is it. This is the, on the 26th of, I can hold it up if they want to take.
Just hold really still, Commissioner Smith.
Very still. On September 26th, we're going to have a dedication. We're naming the Panita Flyover in the name of, in honor of Major General John Cleveland. He's quite a, quite a guy, meant a lot to the country, meant a lot to the Brevard County, and his family will be there. Tom Walker will be there as our. family will be there. Tom Walker will be there as our emcee. Rob Medina will be our, giving the invocation. And we have Sarah Donovan, a satellite high student, doing the National Anthem, Anthem. Lieutenant Colonel Thomas will be speaking. I will be speaking. Congressman Bill Posey will be speaking. And the eldest son of John Cleveland will be speaking as well. So it should be an interesting day. And I extend an invitation to all of you, if you wish to come, or any of the public wishes to come. Should be an interesting day. And that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioners Nardi, and then I am actually going to head back to L4 and throw a couple of things in.
I guess I'm just sitting here a little stunned and flabbergasted that we just basically took away all pay increases, like even the 2% that we did have set aside in reserves. Well, we had the $2 million set aside in the budget to be able to give them a raise, because, I mean, I can, we can go back and look at the data. I mean, how many years did county employees not get any raises at all? That's sort of what we've been trying to do, is make that right. Now, if I thought this $2 million was going to somehow take away services from our residents, all this does, I mean, we complain we can't get good quality employees, and just look to our, to our sister municipalities, and look at what they pay some of their, especially their professional employees. Look what they have in, in growth, and they pay their engineers and everything. We lose, and public safety, that's, I don't think anybody up here doesn't, doesn't believe for a second we need to do right by them. But that's a separate issue. They have a contract that we negotiate. We'll be sure, at least most of this commission will be sure, that public safety is well taken care of. Because we cannot afford to keep losing good employees to other municipalities. We can't. So, you know, COVID aside, I mean, CARES funding is there to help the people who are unemployed. It's there to help pay their bills. It's there to help pay their rent. It's there to help put food on their table. Giving employees a 2% raise, or a 2.3% raise, which this commission did agree to, giving those employees that raise is not going to take away from our residents. And it's going to help morale. It's going to help keep people here. It's going to help them feed their families as well, because they went many, many years without any increases. Many years. I mean, I know, because I've known plenty of people that worked here long before I sat in my seat. So, and some of these people have spouses that are laid off of work as well, so they count on their income. So I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm stunned. And I hope that we can do better. That's all I have.
All right, now, I'll just jump in briefly, as, you know, and I'll touch on that real briefly as well. So my understanding is that the, the county manager, in consultation with the, the budget staff, with Jill Hayes and others, will look to see when it's safe to implement that. It's not that we're not giving it to them. It's simply, it's, it's going to be something that we're going to have to have a degree of confidence is able to be implemented. Is that your understanding, Mr. Bate?
Commissioners, I think I discussed this at the last board meeting. And so our position didn't change since the last board meeting, and I think what I said was accurate. It is also true that in the budget message that we submitted, we did not initially, you know, we did not recommend at that time, which was back in April or May, to give the increases in October. Of course, the ultimate decision would be the board's, just like it's going to be at whatever time we come back. It'll be the board's decision as to when to do that. In light of the board's, you know, discussion, and what we've heard, and the board's motion today, we obviously will wait, and Jill and I will look at some timeframe after October 1, most likely, I would think, at the end of the first quarter, and we would come back. Unless the board gives us different direction, that's what we would do. But we both are here to answer any questions relating to the funding and, and its availability. But I, I believe I answered those questions at the last meeting.
Let me ask you a different question, Mr. Bate, because I would like them to get the, the funds, but I don't want to put the county in a position where we now have a problem because we were premature in, in giving those funds out. Could we award those now? Would you still be confident that we would be in a good position? Or do you have concerns?
No, I can't predict what is happening. What I can tell you is what I said at the last meeting, which was, we, the revenue collection that we have on sales tax, which is one of the primary areas we were most concerned about, was higher than what we initially estimated. In light of that, if the board decided that they wanted to give the increases, we think in light of that, we could do it. However, you know, can I say with absolute certainty we wouldn't have an issue later on? I can't predict what's going to happen in October, November, December, in terms of sales tax collection. If it stays at the rate that it is now, and nothing changes, we should be okay.
I'm, I'm just curious about likelihood. I mean, any of us could get eaten by an alligator or struck by lightning. If we were to do that, would it be something that would cause you to be up at night, being concerned about the county's financial position, if we were to implement it sooner? Well, could, could someone go ahead, or I'll, I'll pass the gavel to Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and make a, a motion to reconsider the earlier vote. Yes, ma'am. But you're, you're chairing it now.
What, what I, I was thinking, we're going to get through the COVID soon. And the economy, the stimulus, stimulus going out from all these CARES is about to go away. I'm not sure if things are going to land. If about, I, I think, I actually think November, a lot of this is going to go away. If we can see it settle down, I wouldn't even mind retroing it, back to October 1, after we see what happens. And Commissioner Tabia, I'm not necessarily against removing the 50,000 from that other entity. I just don't know strategically where we're about to hit as a nation, and specifically as our community. And if, if you get a drastic cut in income, because typically governments get hit a year later, you know, you're going to have to start getting rid of employees. So I need you to figure out how to balance that. And you haven't given me an answer to that. You guys were still looking at all that, to seeing how you thought you would land. But you thought that, that could be a great concern as well. So as we're moving to this budget, I still have great concern of being able to maintain things strategically over the next few years, because I think we're going to get hit. And I don't want people to lose their jobs.
And, and there's no question, you know, that's a different question than what Commissioner Loeb was asking, which is strategically, what's going to happen next year. I can't speak to that issue. There are significant issues next year. In the sheriff's budget, there's going to be significant issues relative to fire assessment, and what happens in fire negotiations. And so, you know, I can't speak to those issues, and, and strategically, what are we going to need in the future? So you're right, Commissioner Pritchett, that's a different issue. But I'm not going to have the answer to that question in November or December either, because that's something that's going to happen next year. And we'll have to play that one as, you know, when that comes. That's a different issue.
And I, yeah, my motion's still going to stand to reconsider the earlier vote on this issue?
I'll second.
Yep, Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair. Okay.
I don't want it yet.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for my behavior. There is nothing that gets me, I'll tell you what, I, I've been mad, I think, at Frank once, this entire, and that's when he announced a raise, a potential raise to employees before we got here. The exact opposite. It turns out that I was absolutely wrong on that one, and he was 100% correct. I am so thrilled with 99.9% of the, the staff's hard work here, as, as I'm, as I'm sure you are. I, I want to put this in perspective, because I, I thought this would go a completely different way. I misunderstood, and so did Dave Berman over there, based on his report. But I'd like to get this unanimous. And I want to put this in perspective, because these are numbers that we may have overlooked. And, and don't take my word for it, I'm going to punt it over to Jill. I know she's been sitting over there quietly, hoping that no one would call on her. Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. This would have, as discussed previously, this would have no impact on the, the mileage rates discussed, and its impact on the general fund would be approximately $78,000. Was that, that 2, that .38, was that about the correct number? I'm sorry, I don't have my notes in front of me.
Yeah, that was to implement the additional .38%.
That, we had, we had the 2% held back.
Correct.
And then, so 78,000 would be new money that would be assessed. That added to the general fund. Help me out here. General fund, how much, sorry, in, in reserves to the general fund, are we in that $10 million range?
Give me one moment, and I'll look at what we have in the general fund and reserves. I want to say it's around $22 million.
Oh, see, I'm way off. Okay, so I, I apologize. So, so in other words, we're looking at a reserve pot of 22 million and an expense of 78,000. So my math is way less than 1%. We're looking at probably a tenth of 1%, if, if, if not, if not smaller. I, I think, I hope the, hopefully, hope the votes were there. I, I'd like to get a unanimous vote on this one. And, because I think this is really important, as what Commissioner Nardi said, you know, for the morale of all the folks that are going through these tumultuous times.
I know. You know what, Jill, we went back with that, and I got, I didn't bring the data with me. I didn't know we discussed it today. But overall, tax increases was $370,000 over the 3.38%, which, Commissioner Tabia, if we end up being able to give them that, I'm good. And that's why I agreed to add it to the other 2 million. I do still have great concern of where this is going to land. I, I can't help it. It's, it's just what I've done with my life. And I, I don't know if the budget's going to be there in four or five months. And then you're going to have to get rid of people, because once you give raises, you can't take them back. And, and so I do have this concern right now. You would have unanimous vote if we had time to look at it and gave it retroactive, if it's there. I'd be fine with that. But this is just my concern right now, is a few months into this, because I really think a lot of this is going away in November. And I'm, I'm really interested to see where the economy's going to land. Our president now is convinced it's going to be fine. I don't know if I'm necessarily there right now, from looking at things in the past. So I, I do have a very strong concern about where we're going to land as a community. We lived, you lived through the last one, too. We went through the housing crisis. It was painful. And so I, I just, I don't know. I just, I would feel better if we held off a few months. And if you want to do it retro at that time, I'm in. But right now, just, just doing this without knowing, I, I don't have any sense of security of knowing where it's going to be. And it is 370,000?
That was the total impact of the additional .38%.
On all of the tax items.
All county departments.
Right, so the whole tax items.
The total, I believe, would be, to do the 2.38, was somewhere in the area of 2.3 million. So that's what we're talking about.
Right. So again, if, if we have it there, I'm in. I'm in for the other 3.38%. I'm with you with that, for what we had to do. But holding it gives, gives me a little comfort. So I'm just telling you, that's, that's where I'm at. I don't mind giving it to them later if it's there. But I really have great concern about the future. And I, I really don't want to lay people off.
Madam, Madam Chair, just to be clear, the, the 2 million was baked into the current budget. We are above projections when it comes to, thanks to Ms. Hayes's error in predicting the economic future. Thankfully, she was much more conservative. And we're above that. Of the 300,000, that's broken up into MSTUs, you mentioned tax increase, does not require a tax increase. We, we voted for something that was not a tax increase.
It's still paying for it from somewhere. I mean, eventually, it's money. It's coming from someone.
I get it. I get it. I get it. What we're talking about, the general fund, is 78,000. And I don't want to put this in perspective, but we handed over $500,000 of that same pot of money to the clerk of the court.
I, we're going to get that back from CARES funds.
We didn't know, I don't know that we are. And we didn't know that when we made that vote. I am asking, it's, thank you. I, I appreciate.
It's, it's okay. I, I don't mind this at all. I, I, I just, I just do have that concern. And let me tell you, we, we just now got rid of the unemployment benefits going out. They're starting some businesses back up. But all of that cash flow that just irresponsibly just started flowing into, into the, all the areas of the country, you know, that stops. And I'm just telling you, we're, we're about to get a drastic halt here. And I don't know where it's going to land. So I'm just, I'm just mentioning this. If it's there, I'm for giving the full 2.38% retro. I just have great concern about doing it in the budget right now, till we see where it's going to hit.
Okay, so we've, we've got a, I see Commissioner Smith has a light. Commissioner?
I'm trying, I was trying to look at the, the meetings that we have left, because what I'm hearing you say is, if we waited until the end of November.
I might not have the votes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Coming from the business world, I've, I've always considered, and I think I've said it here many times over the last however long I've been here, I value the, my employees, our employees over, they're, they're your best and biggest asset, period. If you don't keep your employees happy, then everything else is downhill. And morale is extremely important to keeping them happy. When we voted last time, I voted for 2.38%. I didn't know exactly what that was. But I'm being told what it was, was not as much as what you guys thought it was. I don't know that I knew or had an idea how much it was. I was just, from what I understood from the conversation, that's what we could, we could take a 2.38% hit. So now I'm kind of like betwixt and between, where, where are we with this? But I'm sympathetic to what Commissioner Pritchett is saying, because going forward, we don't know. If you remember, before COVID hit, but we knew it was coming back in March, we were talking about spending monies for the Indian River Lagoon. And I cautioned my fellow commissioners at that time, boy, don't be spending money you don't have. And then, two or three days later, this thing was official, and now we know revenues are down, and et cetera, et cetera. So it's a tough position for us to be in, because if we, if we created the impression for our employees that we were giving them this much raise, and we're not going to give them that much raise, now you're talking about a morale problem. But going down the road, you're talking about a big morale problem if you've got to lay people off. Fact is, none of us have a crystal ball. We don't know. So at this point, I would just say, let your conscience be your guide.
Sure, okay. Commissioner Nardi?
Yeah, and if we didn't have a $22 million reserve, that 78, 78,000 would look a little scarier to me. But, and that to me, it's a drop in the bucket, looking at our budget, even what's not been, you know, mandated. So to me, again, I mean, for the employees, you, you could potentially, I don't want to say people would leave if they don't get the raise. That's not the case. But we, we do, we're doing salary studies because of how grossly underpaid they are in the professions that they do. So we lose great people to municipalities all the time. I mean, I see it. I hear it. I take care of those patients. I, we lose them. I mean, you can talk to any director here. So, I don't know. This is an easy one for me. I mean, they went, how many years? I think the, the longest stretch was eight or 10 years, without any increases at all, not even CPI. I mean, this is a drop in the bucket. If we can't find $78,000, even, you know, aside from, and Frank already said he could absorb it in the budget. If we can't find that, in order to take care of our employees, then we've got bigger problems. Do you anticipate Mr. Bate laying anybody off in the next six months? I mean, do you, considering sales tax revenues are up, do you, do you consider, I mean, do you think that that's where we're headed?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm going to jump back in here, just on a few thoughts, real, real briefly. Hopefully, this will sum it up, because I think everyone's had a chance to fully ventilate on this. One, and I'm, I'm not making this point to, to suggest that I'm switching positions, because I'm not, but the 500,000 of the clerk's office, which I didn't vote for, incidentally, was going toward folks, about half that amount was going towards folks whose salary was cut 100% to zero, that were furloughed. And the remaining folks had their salary cut 20%. So there's a huge difference in my mind between government employees that are making nothing, due to no fault of their own, or cut 20% versus folks that simply haven't gotten a raise in a while. You want to talk about being able to feed your families. If you're making zero, you're not going to be feeding anything. We just had at the Florida Association of Counties, where I'm on the board representing Brevard and Volusia Counties, same board as the Senator Rights District, a budget that came up that included bonuses. I don't know of anyone else that was in opposition to it. I oppose that, because, number one, I don't like bonuses in the government sector. And number two, if we're going to do bonuses, it's not really the image you want the public to have when they're hurting, to start giving people, literally handing money out, giving it away. D2, as Fritz reminded me a couple of days ago, has the lowest comp and benefits cost out of all of the district offices, with the fewest full-time employees maintained by any commission office. That's our second year in a row, and for the folks that haven't been counting, this is only my second year here. So I, I understand the need to run a lean ship, but I also understand the need to pay people well. The reason that we have the fewest full-time employees is so that the folks that I have can be paid reasonably well. So to my understanding, my employees are probably the highest, or close to the highest compensated out of anyone in any of the commission offices, because I have the fewest of them, which enables me to do that while still running at a lower cost than the others. I'm not saying anyone else is doing it wrong, but, but I do agree with Commissioner Smith in his assessment, that you need to treat people right in order to have the morale, in order to have folks wanting to come back to work. I do agree with, with Commissioner Nardi, when she says that she doesn't want to lose people to other municipalities or other local governments. So at this point, you know, shy of something profound coming out, I'm not going to switch position. It doesn't sound like anyone up here is going to switch positions. It doesn't sound like anyone up here is going to switch positions. So, you know, I don't see any further lights. We've got my motion that's been seconded by Commissioner Nardi to reconsider the earlier vote that we've had on this issue. So if you would call the question, I think we can go with that.
Can I have a revisit of the motion, please?
Sure, so this is a motion to reconsider the earlier motion, essentially directing Mr. Abate not to implement the 2.38% cost of living increase.
Can we rephrase it? I'm not against giving it, if we can rephrase this motion, that we're going to be giving it out at October 1, instead of holding it?
This is just a motion to reconsider, it's not on the underlying, so my understanding, Ms. Bentley, help me out with the wrong...
We're just going to open the conversation back up again.
This would open it, and then I could make a motion, or someone else could make a motion.
I have a motion on the floor to reopen the discussion. I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0, sir.
Okay, and then I'll leave you with the chair's spot for a moment, and then hopefully we can wrap it up here. I would move to implement the 2.38% cost of living increase. When's the next pay period begin, Mr. Abate?
I don't, are you, I don't have that date.
You mean, beginning of the budget year, right?
Yeah, the first pay period in the new fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, whatever date that falls on.
Okay.
I would move to implement it, starting at that date going forward.
Could you add to it, instead of holding on to it for a few months? I just don't want the word getting out that I'm against employees having a pay increase. And I get what y'all are doing, but you just, you guys know me enough out of...
I understand where you're coming from.
Right, so I'm just, I'm going to have a hard time voting to do this right now, but it's not because I don't want people having increases, I just have a hard time doing it this quickly. If y'all vote it through, I'm not going to be mad at you, but I'm going to have to vote no on it, so I'd rather you phrase it in the least painful way right now, if you would.
And I understand, and I'll tell you, I'm not, believe me, if someone criticizes you on this vote, to me, I'll certainly be defensive.
This is hard to do it, but, so your motion is to go ahead and distribute the 3.8% October 1?
2.38.
And not hold on to it, as in, that was earlier...
Yes, so this is a direct launch event, which we previously decided to do.
But if it was going to be held, and there was no guarantee that it may be implemented later, so I think you're just making the motion weird, because...
Making it weird?
Well, because if you vote...
Well, what we had approved before is that we had the, that was going to be done, and then he was going to bring it to us in a few months.
But there's no decision that's being made on it. You know what I'm saying? You're saying that it's going to come to us in a few months, but then who's to predict what would have happened?
Well, we agreed to the increases, but we're going to have that discussion later. Instead, we're going to go ahead and move it up to the October 1 date. Correct? So we're changing the timing on it, to be now, instead of later.
And if we get walloped, this is separate from the motion, if we get walloped to the point that we have to reverse this, we may have to. I don't, I hope we don't have to do that, I don't think we're going to have to do it, but if we have to, I'd rather help the folks out now, even if we have to...
Yeah, that's worse to do, so...
Yeah, I understand it's not going to make people happy, but I'd like to do what I can for them now, even if we run the risk of having to undo it for some period of time down the road.
Okay, we have a motion on table by Commissioner Loeb. Do y'all get it? Okay. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Nardi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.